That there's a sign up sheet on the table to the left. If you would like to speak today, please go ahead and sign up at this time. Also, there's some rules of procedure and guidelines that we expect everybody to follow today. And you can pick up a copy of those at the table to the left as well. Thank you.
My name is Robert Smith. I'm chairman of the Harilson County. Okay, light's on now. Hopefully it'll stay on. My name is Robert Smith. I'm chairman of the Harilson County Planning Commission. We have at the table here, members on my far left, your right, Jeff Duberry. Excuse me, Alan Williams, I'm sorry. Pam Henderson. Now Jeff Duberry. And Robert Smith. What I'd like to do is introduce the Harilson County Attorney for the purposes of giving you sort of a summary of procedures that we will be following. There'll come a time where we will get a list. In fact, I think it's already been passed to me, but a list of all of you that signed up. And we'll be calling on you individually and we apologize for this, but we're having to invoke the five-minute rule. That means when you're called on, you will have five minutes and no time sharing of that in any kind of way to present all of the comments that you inclined to provide. So with that, let me call on the first individual, which is Harilson County Attorney Avery Jackson, for the purposes of summarizing the procedures.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to review a copy of the procedures. Again, a copy of the procedures were provided at the table over here to the left, which you can pick up. But I just wanted to review those for everybody today. The agenda of the meeting will be that the applicant will have the first opportunity to present their application. They will have up to an hour and a half to present their application. Then the opponents, which are represented, there's an opposition group that's represented by council here today. And that council, or any other organized opposition group represented by that council, will have a similar opportunity to present for up to an hour and a half. And then the chairman will call on individual members of the public, like the chairman indicated, who can each speak for up to five minutes. After that opportunity, the applicant will then have a short rebuttal period. And then the organized opposition may also have a very short rebuttal period. Just to review some of the guidelines that we expect everybody to follow today. First, all speakers should refrain from personal insults, threats of violence, or threats of illegal actions. All the comments should be directed directly to the planning commission and the members of the planning commission, and not to any members of the applicant group that's here, or to any members of the public. We do urge all the individual speakers to not make repetitive comments. We have a lot of people here today, and to be respectful of everybody's time, we ask that you would please be very specific in your comments. And if people that have come before you have made similar comments, please let those comments stand. We don't need 100 people spending five minutes each talking about the property values. One or two people talking about that would be sufficient. However, if you have any specific comments, those are very much appreciated that could help the board make their decision today. But then, but we just ask that you be very mindful of everybody's time today and be very specific and brief in your comments. We also ask that all the attendees be very respectful of the other speakers. We ask that any expressions of approval or disapproval, that you not clap, please don't boo, please don't cheer. We just remind you that this is not a sporting event. This is a very serious hearing with very serious outcomes. And we'd ask that you treat it as such. The best thing that you can do to protect whatever decision that the board makes here today is make sure that this hearing goes smoothly and that everybody has a fair opportunity to speak and present their comments, evidence, and witnesses to the planning commission. If any of the procedures are violated, or somebody gets out of line, or is disorderly, then the chairman can issue a warning. If somebody continues to get out of line, then the chairman can ask for the offender to leave the facility. And if the offender cannot leave the facility, we have some nice gentlemen in uniforms around here that would be happy to escort them out of the facility. So we ask again that you just keep it very respectful of everybody. Everybody's going to have an opportunity to present, the applicant, the organized opposition, and any members of the public that signed up. Everybody should have the exact same fair opportunity to present their side of the case. At the end and close of the public hearing today, then the commission members will deliberate at that time. And I'll turn it back over to you, Chairman.
I think the next step on the agenda is to have the zoning administrator to present the application from Solid Solutions. Yeah. We'll come back to that.
We have an application from Solid Solutions, one LLC, to rezone from Agriculture A1 to I-1 Light Industrial, I-2 Heavy Industrial, and CGB Commercial Zoning. The properties are located on Budapest Golf Course, Pleasant Hill Church, Rhodes, and Georgia Highway 100. The parcel numbers are 50-16 and 71, 52-44, 45 and 54, 51-7, 65-9, 66-135, 1913, 1417, 2028, 7075, 80 and 83. We have done all of the letters to landowners. We have the receipts for that. We have done the advertising in the paper, and the signs were posted twice.
Okay, did we have anybody respond by phone or by letter?
No, sir, not to my office.
Okay. Any of the members have occasion to receive letters, calls? Anything that you need to share with the commission? All right, here are none. I think-
Hang on just a minute. I was trying to make sure my mic was on, I apologize.
Excuse me.
We did receive just before this meeting three letters from members of the community here that are in reference to the landfill or the application. Also, various comments and discussions out in the community, people just asking me those kind of things, but no formal letter received from anyone other than these.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I was reminded that I omitted approval of the minutes of the last meeting. We'll do so at this time. Okay, the minutes have been distributed. Okay. If you want to take a few minutes to review them, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt them.
I reviewed the minutes and I'll make a motion to approve them.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think I heard two ayes there. Okay. All right. All right, I'm calling on Avery Jackson for the purpose of identifying and calling on the individual who would present the summary of the of the applicant for applicant, which is Solid Solutions.
So, Mr. Norman, we're ready for your side. Whoever is going to start your presentation, and y'all have up to an hour and a half. And if you could have them introduce everybody at your table today.
That's better, I think. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman Smith and Mr. Jackson. We have, we'll make our presentation with seven speakers today. Sorry. We'll make our presentation with seven different speakers today, beginning with Abby Patterson, then T. Stripling, then Mark Pready. Michael Stubbs actually standing in for Mr. Pready. He'll explain who Mr. Pready is, who got caught in snow and could not make it, although he had planned to. And then Ernest Kaufman, who's the Vice President of Solid Solutions. I mentioned T. Stripling, who will be the second speaker, is the President of Solid Solutions. And then after Mr. Kaufman, MAI Appraiser Hugh Bass. And then I will wind up for our presentation. So Abby, if you want to go ahead and start. Anything else, Mr. Chairman, we ready to go?
I have nothing.
Thank you, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Abby Patterson. I'm a member of the Solid Solutions Organization that has submitted the rezoning application that you'll be considering as part of the Harilson County Commission, Planning Commission. We appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning and to look over our application. First off, I want to do a little bit introductions of our team, a little bit about their backgrounds. My name is Abby Patterson. I've been in the solid waste and recycling industry for over 25 years. I have created curbside recycling programs for municipalities. I have worked on permitting of several MSW landfills. And I've worked on the zero waste plans for three Olympic Games. I have a degree in economics from Emory University, and I feel proud to be a part of this Solid Solutions team. A little bit about Ernest Kaufman. He is the Vice President of Solid Solutions. He brings over 30 years of experience in the industry. And what makes him unique is that he has served as a City Councilman in Huntsville, Alabama for three terms. So he understands decision-making as an elected official. Next, we have T., Mr. T. Stripling. He's the President of Solid Solution. He has decades of experience in the natural resources and environmental services industry. Michael Stubbs is our lead engineer. He's with HH&amp;T out of Macon, Georgia. He has a degree in civil engineering from Georgia Tech and has worked on landfills in 26 states across the country. Mr. Mark Pready is our expert in hydrology and geology. Unfortunately, due to some inclement weather, he's unable to be here today, but Mr. Stubbs will be handling his part of the presentation. Mr. Hugh Bass is an expert residential and commercial real estate appraiser who has been performing appraisals in West Georgia for more than 30 years. Mr. Robert Norman and Mr. Joe Fowler are the attorneys who have assisted in the preparation of this rezoning application. These individuals will present aspects of the request that is before you, both the landfill and the industrial park. Okay, next slide. Okay. Thank you. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view of the I'm sorry, I'm gonna take this out of here if I can figure out how. This is an aerial view of the property. We have a total of 2,047 acres. And that site includes buffers, an industrial park, a solid waste facility, and other uses. So just to orient you, this is Interstate I-20 down here to the south. And then to the west, we have State Route 100. Just to kind of give you an idea, this is the entrance to the facility, which is within 500 yards of Interstate 20. It's important to note that the area surrounding us is predominantly non-residential. I wanted to point out some of the uses that are next to us. Here, we have the closed MSW landfill of the county. This is an online facility. We have the county's current operational C&amp;D, that's called Construction Demolition Landfill. A little bit to the north, we have the transfer station. This is where most of the waste from Harilson County goes to put on a floor and gets hauled out of the county to Polk County. We have Waco wastewater treatment plant. On the northern section, we have the Norfolk Southern Railroad line. Up here, we have the Tally Mountain Golf Course, and across from that, the City of Tallapoula Industrial Park. Here, we have some chicken houses, an operational gold mine, and the Honda Performance Parts. So as you can see, this is pretty industrial land. The site appears to be well-suited for a proposed landfill. It meets the applicable EPD requirements for site selection. The site location is consistent with the goals and policies of the Harilson County Joint Comprehensive Plan and the Future Development Map. It is also consistent with the Economic Development Enterprise Zone of the City of Tallapoula on Georgia 100. Next slide, please. This is a conceptual site plan and a buffer plan. Again, I want to kind of orient where we are. This is Highway 20 to the south. And then this is Interstate 20. This is Highway 100 right here. As you can see, the entrance to the facility is here, very close to the interstate. And you enter the facility and you go through the entrance to the industrial park, which is right here. And this road is 1.5 miles till you get to the actual solid waste facility where waste would be deposited. The first part of the depositing of waste would be in the southern cell. And Michael's going to talk a little bit more about the construction of the landfill and safety features associated with it. We also plan to have a recovered material and recycling facility here. Again, you can see in the other areas outside of these two lobes that make up the solid waste facility are these purple areas. These are what's called soil borrow pits. The waste is covered every day with soil. So we have areas that we can draw from to find that soil. These will not be opened simultaneously just as needed. And once they're used, they are replanted. Up here to the north is some, could be used for industrial or recreational use. We hope to work with the community to see what they might want to see this green area turn into. Also, we have an area kind of marked off as possible a walking trail, about 200 feet wide. And it would connect up to here. This little area is another parcel that could be used for commercial uses in the future. Next slide, please. This next slide is just a closer view of the industrial park. Again, Interstate 20, Highway 100. This has approximately 150 acres that could be used for development. And it has over 1 million square feet of industrial warehouse space. You can see here that strategically, we've created these buffers so that nothing will be built here. It's conservation area. And it also works with some of the elevations to kind of block any view of this. Next, I want to talk a little bit about why we're here today. We're here to inform you, the Planning Commission of Harilson County, that our rezoning application is compliant with the 12 rezoning criteria set by the county. Solid Solutions goes above and beyond local, state, and federal requirements in all of its infrastructure projects. Not only will you hear how our company meets the zoning criteria, but hopefully you will also learn that our design, construction, and community involvement go above and beyond. And we do this so we can create successful projects and partnerships. Okay, so for your reference, these are the 12 points of the zoning criteria that are set forth by your county code. We meet these criteria, and this has been supported by the evaluations, reports, and studies that have been supported by 14 separate experts in their fields. The facts relevant to these criteria, which govern your decision, will be addressed throughout our presentation and further addressed by our attorney Bob Norman at the conclusion. It's also important to note that Solid Solutions has already completed the development of regional impact or DRI process, and there were no adverse comments or concerns. Next slide. Next slide is just the table of contents of our zoning application. Our application are these two thick binders. We've made it available to the public on our website. We did this out of transparency, so that anyone who wanted to come and read any of these reports or assessments, they could read it and make comment. Our application was prepared and designed to meet and exceed the requirements of the Harilson County zoning ordinance. As you can see, letters H through U. Oh, I'm sorry, can you could you go a slide before the index? Okay. Yes, slides, if you look at letters H through U, these are all studies and assessments and evaluations that we sourced. We did not have to do this, but we did it so we could have the best project available. And these, some of the studies include traffic impact, value impact on nearby property, noise, odor, sightlines, et cetera. But all of those are included in your binders. Next slide. Zoning officials look to determine what impacts a proposed use will have on a county and on its citizens. Knowing that, Solid Solutions has voluntarily proposed zoning conditions, and they are listed here. These are requirements we've put upon our application on our own. I'm going to go over them briefly. No waste will be accepted outside the state of Georgia. The solid waste facility will not exceed 300 acres. And T. will comment on this in his presentation. The facility will only accept municipal solid waste. Specifically, it will not accept coal ash, municipal sewage sludge, industrial wastewater treatment sludge, and medical waste. We will have financial assurance for closure and post-closure of the facility. And Michael's going to go a little bit into that in his presentation. And no waste will be accepted by rail. The land will not be used for 24 prohibited uses that are in your binder as well. Our presentation that follows will be structured to address each of these 12 zoning issues. When this hearing is done today, we ask that you provide a recommendation for approval to the Board of Commissioners. Now I'm going to introduce T. Stripling, and he will talk a little bit about the site selection process.
Okay, thank you, Abby. I want to thank the Planning Commission for this opportunity. Solid Solutions understands that this is an important part of the zoning process, and so we really appreciate this opportunity to present the project to y'all today. We're really, really proud of what we've got here. We're proud of this zoning application. And what I want to go through is I want to use this 3D scale model that I have in front of the Planning Commission. And what this is, is a scale model that was actually printed with a 3D printer. So everything's to scale. You can see Tally Mountain on there, all the elevations. Everything is exactly to scale. It is a full replica, a real-life replication of what the project will look like when it's finished. And we actually can take the landfill through some different phases. I'll walk through that. But the reason why I'm doing this here is so I can explain to the Planning Commission why we chose this site. Why do we choose Harilson County? Why are we here today? And part of this is I want to use the scale model to illustrate to the Planning Commission that this site actually selected itself. And how it selected itself is Solid Solutions sets forth to have its own siting criteria. Our siting criteria meets or exceeds the siting criteria set forth by the state and set forth by the local ordinance of Harilson County. And so number one, in our siting criteria, we make sure that whatever development opportunity that we enter into, first and foremost protects the environmental and health and safety of the community. And so how we do that is we first look within a county, and we try to identify major undeveloped tracts of land. They have to be at least 1,000 acres in size. And they need to be a minimum of two to three miles from a major transportation corridor. So Ernest and I and several other members of our team took the better part of a full year researching major sites throughout all of North Georgia. Any county that was really frankly within a 100-mile radius of downtown Atlanta, we looked at. We predominantly looked at counties within a 50, 60-mile radius. And just trying to find a site that is a minimum of 1,000 acres and is at least two or three miles from a major transportation corridor, frankly, most importantly, an interstate. But if it is a major four-lane highway, we would consider that as well. Almost eliminated, it eliminated a lot of counties that we looked at. And then as we further drove in- And then, as we further drove in, we wanted to look at consistency of zoning, remoteness, make sure that we weren't in an area that had a lot of residential development, because we wanted to have it be an industrial project. We looked at the geology of the land, things like that, and that all drove, it, it eliminated every single site that we looked at with the exception of this site here in Harrelson County. And frankly, the only reason why we came back and were able to identify this site in Harrelson County is because we engaged into an assemblage to develop it. And so, what you see in front of you is actually, it's probably a 5,000 to 6,000-acre replication, and our project is all over 2,000 acres in the center of it. And that 2,000 acres was an assemblage that we completed with over 10 different property owners and, and over 25 separate parcels. So it took us a tremendous amount of time to do this. We did it all because we realized that this was going to make for the absolute best project that we could possibly present to Harrelson County. And so, that was our intent all along. And so, what I want to do is I want to walk the Planning Commission, and frankly, what I'd love to do is invite y'all maybe up so you can see the, the scale model. Just for a brief moment, I can walk you through the major landscapes, and I think you'll give you a little bit better perspective than just kind of sitting down. Would it be okay with you, Mr. Chairman, if, if y'all came up and looked at it just for a second?
Sure.
Great, thank you. So, right here is, I'll let them come up. So Abby sort of walked through this, but I'm going to go through the major features, okay? So here's the old county closed landfill right here, okay? There's the transfer station, there's the shooting range. This is the power line easement that comes through, this is the major gas line easement that comes through. This is the Norfolk Southern dual-track main line that runs through, okay? There's Tally Mountain, and then the Tally Mountain Ridge, as it runs down, is, is just remarkable in terms of the ridge line that it presents. It, it stretches over 200 feet over the low area, it's like, like right here, as well as down here, right by the Gold Creek subdivision into our industrial park. So as you can see, it's, it's a really heavily industrial area, the Honda Precision Parts over here, the active gold mines over there, Interstate 20 is right here. This is a conceptual layout of what the industrial park would potentially look like with approximately a million square feet worth of industrial-use warehouse space. But the only area, as you can see, that has got any heavy concentration of residential is right here, the Gold Creek subdivision. And I want to discuss that maybe in greater depth a little bit more. But what I'd love for y'all to do is sort of get down and look, and you can see the elevations, it really gives you a great perspective. And then, y'all can go ahead and sit back down again, and I'll try to walk through. I appreciate you coming up and looking at it.
Yeah.
On the plugs? Yeah, I can, absolutely, yeah. Okay, great, yeah. So we have plugs, I'll just go ahead and put in the finished plug, so you can see the elevations of that. Yeah, so the site's approximately 2,000 acres, and because we own the timber rights, what's really important to us too is that we own the timber rights on all the, all the property that we acquire for development. I appreciate y'all coming up and looking at the scale model. And the reason why we do that is because we want to make sure that we have significant buffers for the surrounding community. And the reason why that's important is because we want to make sure that when, when we do our impact studies, be it a, a traffic or a noise, that we can show, we can prove scientifically to the community that there are no impacts from a noise or traffic standpoint. And so, because we have the amount of property that we've acquired, because we've got the buffers in place, we can prove scientifically within our zoning package that no property, no residential property is impacted from a noise standpoint because of this development. Number two, when you look at our access road, which is 500 yards from Exit 5 on Highway 100, you can see we don't pass any residential subdivisions, we don't pass any churches, we don't pass any schools, we don't, we don't pass any hospitals. And so, we come right off the interstate, right into the development, we come off a federally funded interstate system on a state highway, right onto our own private mile-and-a-half road with acceleration and deceleration lanes to make sure that no traffic will ever back up on Highway 100. And the results of the traffic study that's in the zoning application show that there will be no adverse impacts from any truck, from any truck activities. So, once we got past looking at those two, we saw the scattering residential, well, I want to point out one thing about the access road, actually, and as it relates to Gold Creek subdivision. This ridge line right here that we've left, we've intentionally left as buffer, it stretches 200 feet in the air. So what will happen when trucks enter the site and go back behind this ridge, no one in Gold Creek subdivision will see or hear the trucks. And this was so important to us, I mean, we had the ability to build our access road here, up here on Highway 78, up here on Gold Creek subdivision. We had kind of had almost over a dozen different access points, but we spent a tremendous amount of time and energy, because we didn't initially have the ability to build the access road here. But we finally were able to, you know, work an agreement out with this property owner, we were be able, we'll be able to put the access road here, and that was so important to Solid Solutions, that we were going to be able to offer that to the community, because we understood that having a truck route that had trucks going past schools and residential subdivisions was going to be, was going to be, you know, would have, would have an impact to the community. So we wanted to make sure we have that. So, so we, we looked at the scattering, the scattering residential homes that are in this and how remote it is, and, and really the consistency of zoning, the fact that we had, you know, the, the rail line up here with probably over 200,000 tons worth of freight a day that crosses on it. Interstate 20 with all the freight that passes on it every day, and all the other industrial uses like the closed county landfill, and the fact that the active transfer station is there right now. And we really love the consistency of zoning, this site really started jumping out at us. We used the studies, the 14 studies that we undertook, from threatening endangerment to cultural, to hydro-geological, to wetlands, floodplain. We studied obviously noise, traffic, odor, we studied any kind of potential impacts to property values. Mr. Stubbs will go through these more in depth, but we used that to drive the location of the landfill. And what happened was the studies showed us that the landfill needed to go right there, right in the center. And so, when we started looking at it, we said, well, there's no way we can develop this landfill over 300 acres. So we immediately made the assurance to the community that it would never exceed 300 acres. And the reason for this is because you've got this major gas line that runs right here, and you would never, ever, ever build and move this gas line, because it's one of the biggest gas easements in the whole US East Coast. It's physically impossible to move that. You've got the county closed landfill to the east, you've got interstate, we've got Walker Creek here to the south, and so that boxes in the facility, so it'll never exceed 300 acres as a condition of zoning, as a condition of any approved host agreement, and then also just from a practical standpoint. So, we established this, and when we started looking at the landfill, we, Ernest and I and the rest of our team were really, really impressed by the fact that it sat down in a bowl. And that Tally Mountain Ridge ran like it did and elevations that it provided, and, and just the fact that you would not be able to see the landfill. And it was really just so remarkable that this development, that this piece of property was here. And just the fact that it's so difficult to access it, there's, there's some streams that you have to cross over, the elevation change is so dramatic. It, it started to make sense why this large track of land was available so close to the interstate, because it's so difficult to develop, and it's so perfectly suited for what we're trying to do, that we went ahead and did a, a line of site study. We got an engineering firm to come out and do a line of site study, and how that worked is, we actually flew a drone at the highest elevation of the landfill, and we flew it around for half a day, and we took pictures of any possible vantage point that we might be able to see from there. And then, after that, we came in, because we weren't, we liked the results of that line of site study, but we thought we could do something even better. So we came in, all this is voluntary, this isn't required by any Georgia law or, or any party of your local ordinance, but we wanted to do it because we wanted to explain to the community about the visibility of the landfill. We came in and we flew some weather balloons at various heights. Having known the areas where it would potentially be visible, we then went around and we, we looked for over, for close to a full day reviewing all the sites. And what the line of site study showed is that the landfill, at any point in its life, will not be visible from any parts of the city of Tallapoula, the city of Waco, Highway 100 north of Interstate 20, all the way into Tallapoula, Highway 78, Interstate 20 headed eastbound at any point. And there will be a few line of sites, if you're headed on Interstate 20 headed westbound, when you cross over the overpass, if you look to your left, momentarily, there'll be a line of sight just until you get over the overpass. And then, as you head south on 100, the elevation actually goes up, and there are some isolated line of sites there, but those line of sites are mostly limited to the latter half of the landfill. Well, they all, they're all limited to the latter half of the landfill, and they're, they're isolated in nature, and what people will see at that point in time is they're going to see a grassy hill from a distance. They won't see waste, only the workers at the landfill will actually be able to see the waste. So, so we were excited about our ability to offer that, and I've got these plugs, and what I want to do quickly is walk through the various stages of the landfill and explain to y'all how the landfill development works. So, it's not going to exceed 300 acres, but we don't just come in day one and clear-cut 300 acres. We develop a landfill in 10-acre cells, and each 10-acre cell, we do not develop until it's time to develop it. So we don't clear the land until we're ready to, to start developing the cell. So this is about year 10, okay? So you see that only about a third of the western lobe's been developed, the rest of the trees are left in place. And as we close a section, as we're finished with a section, we close it. So this landfill will have a close-as-you-go construction method, and it's closed the same way it's constructed at the bottom, and it's grassed. So it starts to resemble a grassy hill, which is going to really resemble the undulating terrain of the area. So this is year 10. Approximately year 20, you can see the western lobe's finished, and then back to the finished, closed-out landfill, which we estimate to be about 30 years from now. So, there are very few residential homes within a one-mile radius of the footprint, which, as I've already stated, was one of the best characteristics of, and one of the best drivers of why we decided to develop this site. And we believe in the results of Hugh Bass's study that's in our zoning application that shows that there will be no adverse property impacts from the development of this landfill. But just to alleviate any concerns that members of the community might have, we've gone ahead and installed a property value protection program for members, for any residential property that is within a one-mile radius of the landfill. And what that property value protection program offers is, for a period of time of 10 years after the landfill opens, if any residential property goes to sell their home, and they cannot get the value, as if it was from an appraiser, as if it was appraised, as if it was not sitting next to a landfill. If they cannot get that value for their home, then we'll pay the difference for a period of 10 years. So even though we believe and we do not see any impacts, as proven in our zoning application, we still have that, that we can offer the community. So, lastly, we look at the geology of the site. We've drilled, Mr. Stubbs is going to deal with this, he's our professional engineer. Initially, we had Mark Pretty, who's our geologist, hydro-geologist, who's got experience in siding over 37 landfills in his career. He's actually our geologist, but he got stuck in weather in Greenville, South Carolina, so he couldn't make it unfortunately. But we've drilled, I think, 13 wells here, we've, we've done a number of pits, so we've extensively studied the geology of the site. And we know that the geology is suitable for developing a landfill. We've gone ahead and, and reviewed all the other EPD site requirements, and we can, we can make the statement that the preliminary analysis shows that the landfill meets all EPD's siding requirements. So, I think what I want to do at this time is, is hand it over to Mr. Stubbs, who's our professional engineer, and I'd like for him to talk about construction, design and operation, liners, and some more about site suitability.
Good morning. My name is Michael Stubbs, I'm a registered professional engineer in approximately 11 states. I've been practicing in the solid waste industry for about 25 years. I'm employed by Hyatt Harbor and Newbury in Tribble. We have solid waste clients all over the country. I think I've been in about 26 states and, and worked on landfills also in the Bahamas and Puerto Rico. I've got two pieces today I want to talk to you about. The first is the hydro and geology portion of the site. Mr. Mark Pretty, a professional geologist, was going to present that, but the weather kept him from doing so. So I'll give you a brief intro on Mark. Mark has a bachelor's and a master's in geology. He's been a licensed geologist for about, since 1991. He's licensed in approximately seven states and works on over 37 landfills in the southeast in the permitting capacity, lots of them in the state of Georgia. The first thing that the group asked Mark to do was to take a look at the siting criteria for the landfill. And landfills in the United States of America are heavily regulated. You have multiple governments that oversee it, you have many state and federal regulations that are continuous from siding to design to construction to operation, and ultimately closure and post-closure for a 30-year minimum period after the landfill closes. So all of those are incorporated into the initial siting decision. Next, there we go, perfect. So, I can't tell you how many pieces of property we must have looked at over the course of roughly a year to find one that started to meet the criteria. These criteria are developed from the Code of Federal Regulations, the Georgia Geological Survey, the EPD Solid Waste Management Rules, the Official Code of Georgia, Safe Drinking Water Rules, and of course, Mark and HHNT's experience in the industry. So, some of these criteria are listed out here. Several of these criteria are outright prohibitions. If you have them, you cannot site a landfill there. Just a few of those are buffers to airports, national historic sites, bombing ranges, number of facilities in a given area. So several of these on this list here are just outright prohibitions. If you have them, give up, move on. Others on this are restrictions that require design to either mitigate or avoid altogether. A few of those might be floodplains or a trout stream or a wetland or something like that. So, BLE's first task was to go through all of that. They did, and their finding was, after a thorough investigation, BLE informed the Vindicator Team that they did not identify a single state or federal regulation that would stop the project. So we, we crossed that bridge. The next task that we asked BLE to do is just because it meets a siting restriction doesn't mean that it's going to meet the hydro-geology and the geologic need for a landfill. So we have them go out and investigate that. So they do. The only way to really investigate a site like that is to get out there with a drill rig and test tow pits and get out there and explore what's underneath the ground. They did so. Next slide, please. As you can see, one more pointer here. The geologists developed the exact locations for the borings based on where we believe the footprint might go. Obviously, those are determined by an expert in the field, they did so. They drilled approximately 14 borings from anywhere to bedrock to groundwater, some even up to 70 feet in-depth. They took samples of the soil and the rock beneath the ground and tested those in accordance with engineering parameters. They came back with the results, and I'll summarize those here in just a second. They also dug many, many test pits around the facility, that's shown by these black dots here. And so, those test pits, I was, we dug more than that, but we dug those where we thought barsoils and operational soils and liner landfill soils were present. They discovered those soils there, which was not necessarily a surprise, but it was, it further supported the need and the, the location of this facility. So, once they did all of that, they installed approximately 14, 11 posometers in those 14 holes, and we measured the groundwater for over a year, watching the groundwater rise and fall, so that any landfill design would be above what's we call seasonal high. We also had a professional technician take a look at the soils that's experienced in landfill construction, so that the soils coming out with the samples to determine whether or not they would meet the necessary soils for both operation and liner construction soils. So after all this was done, BLE issued some conclusions, they are. The groundwater table mimics the ground surface, as we expected. Soils encountered were generally stiff clay and sandy silt, suitable for landfill operation and construction. The bedrock encounter was very hard and not subject to direct, developing karst features, so it's strong. Bedrock and stiff soils will provide for a stable landfill foundation, not subject to large amounts of sediment, which is supportive of a landfill. Laboratory tests of shallow soils demonstrate that they're capable of both landfill soil liner materials and operational soils for the site, and that the landfill subgrade will be based on groundwater separation and bedrock separation. Their final conclusion that they gave to the team- Their final conclusion that they gave to the team was that site's location restrictions, results coupled with the site's geological, hydrogeological, and geotechnical characteristics show that the landfill, that the site is suitable for MSW development.
And Mr. Stubbs, if I could stop you right there. We're going to take a couple of breaks throughout the presentation today, and we'll stop the time from the applicant from running. But at this time, we wanted to take a break, and it has been just about an hour.
Can you give me 10 seconds? 10 seconds?
We'll let you finish up as soon as we get back. So we're going to take a five-minute break, everybody. Five-minute break, and then we'll get started.
Behind the table, they've asked that everybody move over towards the bleachers and please sit in the bleachers. And we'd just like to remind everybody that the rules and procedures we went over at the beginning of the meeting are still in effect. And we're ready to get started if you are. We're ready to get started.
Thank you. All right, so just to finish up Mark's presentation really quick, the next step that BLE would take would be to prepare a report in accordance with the Georgia Geological Survey Circular 14, Criteria for Performing Site Acceptability Studies for Solid Waste Landfills in Georgia. The last slide that Mark had, this is a picture of a typical drill rig taking samples at a similar site. And that's the type of drill rig that sat out there for months as we gathered the samples. So I'm going to change gears a little bit on you and talk a little bit about the engineering parameters that the team looked at going forward. So first, we want to talk just briefly about permits and approvals for municipal solid waste landfills in Georgia and really the country. So pre-1990, we buried all our waste in the ground. And the waste we're talking about is the waste that we all throw away at our households. And so in 1990 or so, the Environmental Protection Agency issued a set of regulations that set forth minimum measures that must be required to construct an MSW landfill. The rules that we refer to in my business is called Subtitle D regulations. EPDA also allowed the states to develop their own programs if they wanted to, as long as that program was at least as stringent as the federal rule. Georgia elected to do that along with many, many states, so they have their own program. And it's administered through the Georgia Environmental Protection Division. That allows Georgia to focus on regional concerns that are important to Georgians, that are unique to our state. So as we go through the process, certain approvals and permits are needed in order to permit and operate a landfill in the state of Georgia. The first is local approval, which is why we're here today. Those local approval processes, as you understand, we're going through right now. Once we get through the local approval processes, you'll be seeking a redundant set of permits that overlap. We refer to them as nesting permits. So I'll go through a few of those just here in just a second about the permits and how they affect one another. The first is the Georgia Solid Waste Handling Permit, and there's two parts to that. The first is before you can even get a permit, the site has to be determined suitable by the state of Georgia. I ended Mark's presentation by saying that he would have to submit a report for suitability, that's it. So he submits it, the state of Georgia approves it suitable, and they'll list specific conditions, unique to this site, that the facility must be permitted under. We call that site suitability determination. Once you get that, you move forward with an EPD Solid Waste Handling Permit application. That application will be bigger than the one in front of you. It will have 40 or 50 plan sheets plus lots and lots of other calculations that go with that. The EPD Solid Waste Handling Permit will be issued by the director of Georgia EPD. And it'll include things, and this is not an exhaustive list, but the major components. Operational conditions, acceptable waste, waste screening, groundwater methane, stormwater reporting and monitoring, closure and post-closure, and something called financial assurance, I'll touch on in just a second, annual, quarterly, monthly, and semi-annual monitoring, and who gets that, how stormwater will be managed, what surveying requirements are required, what kind of leachate handling procedures we have. Leachate is the water that touches waste or comes out of the waste, is managed wastewater. And the construction quality assurance requirements that I'll touch on in just a second about how all that comes together. That's one permit. The next permit we'll have to get after that is what's called an EPD Title V air permit. And these permits overlap one another. So there's another permit, that air permit will specify the requirements for the air emissions from the site. The next will be at least two stormwater permits, one for construction activity and one for operational or industrial activity for the site, also issued by the state. We have local permits such as health department permits and building permits, and local erosion sedimentation control permits that will have to be obtained and complied with. We'll also have EPD surface mining permits, as we mentioned before, the Barra area soils. Those mine areas, which will be really just subdued topography of this particular site, have to be the way they're developed, the way they're mined, and most importantly, how they're reclaimed. That's all part of a permit that's administered by EPD. And landfill gas is very common now, that landfill gas has a beneficial reuse. So pretty well most big sites that have landfill gas projects are going to beneficial reuse type systems. So if that does develop at this facility, we'd have to get gas-to-energy permits as well. The next piece we talk about is, now that we know how the permits are nested together and they overlap, is the ultimate engineering design. And so this applicant, Solid Solutions, they elected to go ahead and bring all the experts to the table first. And so these experts come in and their expertise, they look at this facility so that we can develop the location of the landfill portion of this application, that we can develop it appropriately. A few of these experts that were brought in were geotechnical and hydrogeologic professionals and engineers, civil engineers, noise, odor, traffic experts, solid waste engineers, structural engineers, floodplain and stormwater routing specialists, surveyors, air quality experts. All of these were engaged upfront. And so the way that works is here comes the professional, they look at the site, they develop their criteria, and we repeat the design process over and over and over again until we get the best location on the site. All that's been done, many of those reports are in the application that you see in front of you. And several of the things that we look at there are the geotechnical strength, the stability of the facility, the constructibility, the operation, how it's going to be put together, how it's going to be phased, how are we going to access it? What kind of contingency planning do we need for weather events or otherwise? How's the stormwater going to be managed, stored, and sampled? What kind of groundwater and methane systems and monitoring system and detection systems are going to be put in place? All of those are just a few. That was done, repetitive process. I can tell you, the location and the footprint of the landfill was revised accordingly. This application changed accordingly based on those experts. And then as part of that, you end up with a system where all the experts are okay with what we've done, it meets their criteria, and we've moved forward to the next system, which is the main components of the landfill. Next slide, please. So the first main component of the landfill is what we call the landfill liner system. I mentioned before that we've already determined a seasonal high groundwater elevation for preliminary design purposes. The base liner system is separated by a certain amount of separation from seasonal high groundwater. We call that compacted subgrade. Then on top of that is at least a minimum two-foot-thick layer of compacted soil liner, clay liner. That's a specific type of material that's on-site, that's put in a specific way, that's tested a specific way, reported a specific way. On top of that, you have what we call a geosynthetic clay liner. That is a dry bentonite clay encapsulated between two fabrics. The purpose of that is a redundant system. You'll find that engineers are redundant. We like systems that act as backup to each other that aren't related to each other. So the way this works is a geosynthetic clay liner sits up underneath the HDPE flexible membrane liner. Should there ever be a hole developed in the HD membrane liner, it wets that clay. Clay swells when it gets wet, it plugs the hole. On top of that is the primary liner system, which is the high-density polyethylene membrane liner. It is manufactured for this purpose. It's at least 60 mils thick. It's put down in a certain way, we'll talk about it in just a second. On top of that is what we call a cushion geotextile, does exactly what it sounds like, acts as a cushion. It protects the liner from the material on top. On top of that is what we call a protective cover system, does what it sounds like. It protects the liner system, it sits on top of the cushion. This applicant has elected to not only go ahead and specify what this protective cover system would be, they've selected a stone system, which is probably the most expensive. But imagine stone down there at the bottom of the landfill, it's not going to go anywhere. And it acts as not only protective cover, but it also acts as a leachate conveyor system. In addition to that, you have pipes in the bottom of the landfill that drain to small, maybe 10 or 15 acres at a time sumps. So you have liquid that's being able to be conveyed through this and through the pipe, there's a redundant system. So that's the base liner system and how it works, and the municipal solid waste goes up on top. Next slide, please. All right, we essentially, at the end of the landfill facility, we do what we call a close-as-you-go. We take the base liner system and we replicate it on top. Same types of materials, they do the same thing. We want to make sure that we minimize water infiltration through the landfill. So you have a cap system that controls stormwater on top, have the same types of membrane liners, et cetera, et cetera, on top, for the sole purpose of ensuring that we store waste in what we call a dry environment or a dry entombed environment. You want to minimize stormwater coming into the waste over the long-term life of the facility. I will mention briefly that T touched on it, but all liquid from the bottom of the landfill is collected in what we call sumps. They're located right here. This facility is designed with relatively small acres draining to each sump. So maybe 10 or 15 acres at the most going to individualized sumps. And these are monitored daily to ensure all the liquid is coming off the liner. Essentially, if you don't want anything to have the potential to leak, you just remove the water. And so that's what these sumps are designed to do. Also critical to recognize that each one of these facilities here has, each one of these liner systems has to be constructed under the watchful eye of a CQA engineer, Construction Quality Assurance, that uses his expertise, puts his engineering seal on it, he is third-party, to make sure that these systems are not only designed, but they're constructed and tested in the field when they go in, so that they're correct. The next piece I'd like to touch on is the closure, post-closure. So when the landfill is fully constructed, and you have to have money at the end of the facility to close it. So how does that work? Well, the Solid Solutions in this case, every ton of waste that goes into the landfill facility, they have to set aside a certain amount of money to close it. Those financial models are done every year, and they also have to maintain it for at least 30 years afterwards. So they set aside a certain amount of money for every ton of waste that goes in the landfill for something we call closure, post-closure. Now, we won't be redundant. The state also requires that the applicant put forth a financial assurance mechanism that's issued in favor of the state. Could be a bond, could be another mechanism, but essentially, it's a bonding mechanism that should anything ever occur, the state can close the landfill and do post-closure on it. So two buckets of money aimed at the same purpose, and both of them can cover the cost. Next is enforcement. You may ask, all right, well, we have all these permits, how are they enforced? Well, each permit I mentioned before, that regulatory agency has an enforcement arm. So EPD has enforcement arms out of Atlanta, they have local enforcement arms. So the permits are the facility's license to do business. If they cannot comply with their permits, enforcement comes. It looks like this. Inspections are generally every quarter or so. They're looking for compliance. If they can't find compliance, they'll issue a deficiency. If it's serious, they'll issue a violation, which will quickly lead to a consent order and a fine. And if they cannot comply with the permits, the state will simply pull the permit, which stops the landfill. And you may ask if that's ever been done? Yes, the state of Georgia has shut down landfills before, the lack of compliance. So there is enforcement arm part of that. It's also important to realize, these permits are not stagnant. Every permit we've got, about every five to 10 years, has to be renewed for change in technology. So every permit that you get is going to be renewed every five or 10 years at the state, federal level. The last two pieces I'm going to touch on are odor and noise. Next slide, please. So the applicant hired an odor expert out of the Northeast. We've worked with him a couple of times before, and he developed a worst-case model for odor. He set the threshold, a conservative threshold, of hydrogen sulfide. And the reason he picked hydrogen sulfide is that's detectable at really low levels. He could have picked other things, but he picked hydrogen sulfide because it's detectable at a really low level. He set the threshold for the worst-case model at 10 parts per billion, which is this green line here. And you can see, in the worst case, and this is potential, this is just the potential, worst-case potential, you can see that potential is on lands either controlled or owned as part of the applicant or naturally wooded buffers that are not part of any residential development. He also made several recommendations that are in your application that you see for how to make sure the facility maintains a potential much lower than that. These include exclusion of special waste types, which T covered briefly, additional buffer controls, which are already incorporated in, limit water infiltration by temporary covers and exposed geosynthetics, and a close-as-you-go process, which are already in the application in front of you today. The last study I'd like to touch on is the noise potential study. Next slide, please. Same thing, develop a noise study that is conservative. The conservative model they picked was a 55 decibel level, which we're talking at about 60 decibels. Normal conversation's about 60 decibels. They did a baseline study, the expert did that, he prepared this map. And as you can see, if you look in this general range right here, the 55 decibel level is going to be on property that's included in the application, controlled by Solid Solutions. And I believe the consultant's finding was this has a very low potential to violate any of the ordinances for nuisance in the Harrelson County noise ordinance. So with that, I really appreciate your time. Thank you. I will turn it over to Ernest Kaufman with Solid Solutions.
Thank you all for having this meeting today and being able to listen to everything that we're trying to explain. If you'll put the next slide up, please. This is Meriwether County, Georgia, which I did. It wasn't a landfill done in Georgia for 15 years before this one was done. And we did it, in my company. There hadn't been one since then, which is another 15 years. This site in so many ways resembles what we're doing here in the fact that it's right off the interstate. This one's actually closer to the interstate than this. Meriwether County, we wanted to make sure that we can bind the waste into a smaller area. We introduced the concept of an industrial park, and you know, people thought we were crazy. Nobody wanted to go down there. A big industrial announcement there was of Dollar General. And that nobody would want to build houses. The realtors all came out and said, oh, you know, you're going to destroy property values, you're going to pollute people's wells, you're going to pollute the groundwater, on and on and on. Almost verbatim, the same kind of things that you've heard here. When we talk about, next slide, when we talk about Harrelson County, I think there's several things that are unique about this. One is compatibility of zoning. I've never had another site that, from a compatibility of zoning standpoint, is pretty much surrounded by industrial uses already, with the old county landfill right next to it. And so it sits up perfectly, you know, for what we're trying to do. It sits down in a valley. When you look at the old facility, I think there's several things that you have to keep in mind here. When we talk about and listen to opposition talking about how nobody's going to build next to it, and you know, we're going to poison wells and smell going five miles, I want you to think for a minute. This old landfill operated for 40-some-odd years. In our research, we hadn't found anywhere where the public's out here complaining about the smell of it. Old landfill was built without a liner, without monitoring, without methane gas systems, without leachate. And like most county landfills, there was really no record of what went in there. Now, have any of you heard that the old county landfill's poisoned any wells? No. Have you heard the old county landfill's poisoning Walker Creek? No. And so now, you get a state-of-the-art facility lined, monitored, inspected constantly, and all of a sudden, they're going to poison your wells, destroy your land values, and nobody's going to want to build next to it. This, you know, it's scare tactics. And we run into this all over the country when we do these facilities. Our facility in Meriwether, you know, they enjoy the benefits of the host agreement that we have there. First quarter last year, their check for that one quarter was $974,000 that went to the county. Here, we're proposing the same kind of host agreement or the general terms of a host agreement. Now, that's money that's somewhat mandated by the state government, and others is mandated, not mandated, but that we'd agree to terms to. When you look at, when we go through here and we talk about the property value protection program, there's very few houses, if you look at the overall, that surrounds the site here, that are within a mile. And those particular houses will fall under the property value protection program. We've got a short little film we want to go through here. This is from Meriwether County. These are actually residents in all of Meriwether County that are on here. If you'd do the film, please.
How the Meriwether Industrial Park transformed a community. Ernest Kaufman, along with much of the same Solid Solutions development team that is now proposing a landfill and industrial park for Harrelson County, Georgia, developed a similar project for Meriwether County in 2009.
When you're faced with these kinds of decisions, and they're tough, I won't sugarcoat it, they're very difficult decisions for a community to make. You have to follow the science, you have to get the best information you can, you have to do your research, you have to find out about who you're dealing with, you have to determine that they're going to do what they say they're going to do, and not be overcome with fear and the naysayers.
Because what we do is different. It's different from any other landfill developer. But what we like to do is take large tracts of land, put the landfill in the middle of it so it doesn't bother people, and then figure out what you can do around it, such as stream mitigation bikes, industrial parks.
One of the benefits of this particular site is the interstate, having interstate access right here. And most of the, especially the Korean companies, do what you call adjusted-in-time delivery. And they can jump on the interstate and go north or south and get their product to their supplier when they need to. But the people didn't really believe we would ever develop this. They just didn't have faith. There's about 1,000 jobs here right now. And Mando, they have two facilities here. And Mando will become the largest industry in Meriwether County when they reach their full capacity. Of the two plants, they will have about 1,200 employees total.
Of course, they had to have infrastructure. So we ran sewer line all the way from Hugginsville all the way to the industrial park, set a couple lift stations, and then ran a water line all the way to the site, too.
Many local companies provide ongoing services for the landfill and the industrial park.
Yeah, it's very important because we're 10 minutes away from it, and it's just a great opportunity for us to work close to home.
The difference is transformative. We are finally achieving the growth that we've tried to do for all these years. When I got here, there was a population of 3,000, mostly old and retired or poor or both. We have a whole new set of people that have come to town, younger people, millennials and younger. We're in the process of turning dirt on 400 new rooftops, which is amazing when we're a city of 1,100 rooftops.
And I've had testimonies from people saying, thank you for bringing this industry here because I just bought my first car. And that's what it's all about.
Moms and dads in Harrison County need more jobs close to home. They also need more jobs so their children won't have to leave home.
They've brought jobs to the community, and there's nothing like jobs to grow a place.
Next slide, please. If you look at the industrial park here, it fronts on the interstate, and that's where industrial property should be. Industrial parks that generally are not running on the interstate, or you don't turn immediately off into it, are not nearly as successful as those that are. Here, you'll be coming in on the landfill road, 500 yards off an interstate, turning in on a private road that has no, any kind of housing on it, going behind a tall ridge, and then accessing the industrial park there, and then going, continuing on for over a mile or more, and accessing the landfill itself. The industrial park, when we looked at it, you know, we had a couple of people that we wanted to make sure were protected, this Gold Creek subdivision. We decided to come in back behind it so that this big ridge right in here will protect it. The lady and her family that lives up here, right here, didn't want to have to come in and look in the back door of an industrial building. And so we are leaving all this intact here. Both of those two are susceptible to being developed if we wanted to develop it. But to us, it's more important to leave up natural barriers to what we have here. In closing, I want to say a couple of things. One, keep in mind what your own landfill, your own landfill, has done or not done. It hadn't done any of the things that, unfortunately, the people that oppose, no matter what location, is going to be the same thing. It hadn't poisoned people, it hadn't destroyed Walker Creek, and ours certainly isn't going to do that either. Lastly, I've served on planning commissions, I've sat in the seat where you are. I've served on city council, and I know what it's like to go into meetings like this when you've got huge crowds. A lot of these people here are here to learn, and we're glad of that. But you know, we have met every one of the outlines, every one of the pieces that you have in your own ordinances, we've met. And so as any elected official or planning, it's hard because you have to sit there and say, okay, if these people have met all of our regulations, then I got to approve it. Or you should approve it, as opposed to getting caught up in the emotion of the crowd or lack of emotion. It's a hard place to be, it's not easy. So we thank you for that service. Hugh Bass is coming up next, and Hugh is local here. And I want you to pay attention to the maps that he's going to show you of other landfills. Hundreds of houses, not just a few, hundreds of houses, thousands of houses that are built up right next to the landfill. And so you have to ask yourself, well, if these landfills are poisoning all these people, and if they're so bad, then why are people continuing to build? Why are people moving in there? Why don't I hear news about people getting poisoned and dying from the wells, like you do about food poisoning? You don't, yeah? So keep that in mind when you look at this. And be careful about buying into the hysteria of how facility's going to hurt you. I thank you, Hugh.
Good morning, Commission members. My name is Hugh Bass, as you have heard. I am the owner of Bass and Associates. We're a real estate appraisal firm located in Carrollton. I am local, I grew up in the Centerpoint community. Most of you all know that, it's between Temple and Carrollton and Bremen. I grew up on a farm there. I currently live in Carrollton, but I have family members and friends who live in Harrelson County. So I do have an interest in this area, and I'd like to see this area protected and have proper and reasonable growth. In the course of my appraisal career, for about the past 37 years, I have done in excess of 50 appraisals in the Harrelson County area. These are for lenders, for attorneys, for property owners. We have done work for the city of Buchanan, for the city of Tallaposa, for the Harrelson County Board of Education, for the Bremen Board of Education. So those are some sample clients that we've had. Some of the recent appraisal assignments that you would recognize Some of the recent appraisal assignments that you would recognize of property we appraised, we appraised the Blake House at Waco for the Harrelson County Board of Education. We appraised Southeastern Hose, the manufacturing facility in Bremen. Due to the unfortunate death of Randall Redding, we appraised the RJR Construction Company office recently. We've appraised Mount Holly Church. We appraised Mount Olympia for the City of Buchanan. We appraised Miller Funeral Home. We did a cost analysis for the City of Tallaposa for their streetscape project, which is currently underway. So, that's just a sampling of some of the work that we've done in Harrelson County in the past few years. So, I was engaged to do this real estate market study back in early 2020. And at the time I was engaged, my first activity was to come and meet with Ernest Kaufman and take a tour of the site. It was proposed for the landfill industrial park. So, we did that. That has been my only contact with anyone from Solid Solutions officials. So, at no time during my study have been influenced or directed by any officials of Solid Solutions, one, to provide a favorable or directed results. Any of the opinions and conclusions that I have are from my independent, unbiased research. So, I did a two-phase study. The first was to study the subject property and its neighborhood within about two or three miles of the proposed industrial park and landfill. And then the second phase was to study real estate activity around existing operating landfills. So, as I studied the first side way there, I know you've been introduced to the subject property. I know all of you all are familiar with what's around that subject property. But in doing the research and analysis, I had to become aware of what's around the subject property. I was aware of it. I've been aware of it for many, many years, except I did take a little tour around on my own of some of the roads that go into this property that I had never been on before. But I think I've been on all the roads that project into the park and go around the park, proposed park. So, you know where the intersection of I-20 and State Route 100, you know Honda Performance is over there. You know just south of the interstate is McAdams Drive, and it has, even though it's zoned, I mean, it's zoned commercial, it has industrial uses in there. So, there's industry in that area. Also, up on Golf Course Road is an industrial park, so you have industrial up there. So, precedent has been set that, you know, industrial should be acceptable in this area. We're adjacent to the old Harrelson County landfill and the shooting range, as you've been... The West Georgia Mud Park, Bogging Park is just northeast of us. The Norfolk Southern Rail Line, which I know you're all familiar with that, is a very active rail line between Atlanta and Birmingham with long trains and quite a few trains coming through each day. This property has, as had been said, a high-tension transmission power line crossing it. It's got an interstate gas line crossing it. So, and the property has abundant frontage on I-20 and some frontage on State Route 100. You're familiar with all the development around the Interstate 20, Highway 100 area of the two truck stops, several convenience stores in that area, restaurants, a Dollar General, a leave and a motel. So, you're familiar with what's going on there. But I look at things like that, what is in the area, what have been the historic growth trends, and what has changed, what's going on at the present time. I also consider demographics and income levels, housing permits in the area. Another thing of interest to me about the subject is, of all the roads in the area, it is not served very well by roads, and it is not penetrated much by roads. You have the Pleasant Hill Church Road that comes through the south side and terminates into the subject, and then several roads coming up off Highway 78 come down and terminate into the subject. Otherwise, it's pretty isolated. As you're aware, the current zoning of that property is A1, which is agriculture. Uses allowed there would be agricultural purposes and low-density residential. It has a minimum lot size of five acres. So, and the current use of it and the historic use of that has been as a timber tract and some scattered low-density residential in the area. Also of importance that I considered was the Gold Creek subdivision that is in close So, if we could see the next slide, please. This is the Harrelson County future land use map. And the subject, again, is down here at the intersection of I-20 and 100, and you see it's in the kind of the pale green color. That is indicated for the future land use map is indicated as agricultural and forest land. So, if this were to be a, project were to be approved, zoning would be approved. Of course, that future land use map would need to be amended. And I recognize that municipalities amend those periodically as needed. Next slide. This is the City of Tallaposa zoning map. Now, this property is in, of course, unincorporated Harrelson County, but it is right adjacent to the City of Tallaposa. The core of Tallaposa is to the northwest. The city has connectivity down to the interstate. And I'm sure you're aware that, again, the Honda facility is zoned M2. That's a heavy industrial zoning. The area on Golf Course Road is M2, heavy industrial zoning. And this is commercial in here. It's got, I believe, it's kind of heavy type, commercial uses. And again, the McAdams Drive, I don't know why, it's zoned C4, I believe, which is a commercial, but it's pretty much light industrial uses in there. Next side slide. This is the Tallaposa Enterprise Zone. There are two zones, one up in the core area of basically the south side of downtown Tallaposa, and then down around the interstate. So, enterprise zones have been designated by the state as areas that suffer from disinvestment, underdevelopment, and economic decline. Those are the criteria that a municipality would apply for to get into an enterprise zone, indicating that there's a desire to have development in that area. After becoming familiar in somewhat more detail than I was before of the neighborhood, maybe a little bit more, but I mean, most of that already, the next consideration I had to make was what is the highest and best use of the subject. In about every appraisal that we ever do, highest and best use is the foundation of the appraisal. That's the first thing we go through. And there are four components to highest and best use that we consider. It is legal permissible, is it physically possible, what is financially feasible, and what is maximally productive. Legally permissible is typically controlled by zoning. On this property, legally permissible is controlled by zoning. It is also somewhat controlled by two major easements that cross the property because they control, the holder of those easements, the power company and the pipeline company, control what can be done on their land to a certain extent. Physically possible, that's just you look at the physical characteristics of the property, the streets, infrastructure, access, topography, shape of the land, size of the land, to consider what physically might be done with any tract of, this tract of land. And then we consider financially feasible, and anything that is legally permissible and physically possible that will produce a return on your investment, even if it makes you a dollar on your investment, is considered to be financially feasible. The next category is maximally productive. So, of all the uses that are legally permissible, physically possible, and financially feasible, which will provide the maximum return on the investment. So, that's the steps we go through for a highest and best use analysis. For the subject, there are basically four options for the highest and best use. One, you leave it as it is, retain it as an agricultural and scattered residential, low-density residential use, or you could rezone it for a more high-density residential use, or you could rezone it for a commercial use, or you could rezone it for an industrial development. And you might even rezone it for a mixed-use development where you would blend some of those. But let's consider single-family residential, and is that feasible for this 2,047-acre tract of land? First off, when you look at the demographics and growth of all of Harrelson County, but particularly southwest Harrelson County, it's a rural area. It has low population base, and I'm not knocking that because that's, you know, I understand people appreciate living in rural areas. I grew up on a farm. But based on current and projected growth rates for the area, if you did a typical subdivision, say, of an average of one acre lights, you'd probably create about a 75 to 100-year supply of lights. It would take a long, long time to absorb that many lights. Developers don't buy land and hold it for 75 to 100 years. A large part of the topography of the subject is not suitable for small lights because it is real hilly. Therefore, some of it you have to develop into big lights, and the cost of infrastructure, putting streets in, has gotten to where it's pretty prohibitive for large light subdivisions. That's the reason you see so many new subdivisions are developed on small lights. It costs you about $400 to $500 per linear foot for your street, of your street, for all your street and infrastructure that you've got to put into a subdivision. It gets really expensive. So, I, my conclusion is there's no economically feasible or reasonably probable use of the subject as a whole for a residential development. Next option is commercial. Commercial requires, especially on 2,000 acres, would require a really heavy industrial base, excuse me, heavy residential base. And Harrelson County and southwest Harrelson County does not have the residential base to support that much commercial use. Industrial, I would say there's also inadequate demand to support 2,047 acres of industrial The other issue with industrial is industrial users generally want large, level pad sites. And with all the rolling, hilly topography of this property, it would be very expensive to bring that to usable industrial grade. And the industrial market, strong industrial market just has not moved out this far yet. It may be inching its way into, from Thornton Road where all the huge, large distribution warehouses are. A few have been built in Douglasville, somewhere in Villareca, and eventually it will get out here, but still, it'll be a long time before they could ever absorb 2,000 acres. So, the subject has very limited and viable alternative uses, in my mind. The proposed indicator environmental industrial park is likely the only feasible, large-scale, multi-use project that can absorb and utilize the entire 2,047 acres. Again, Honda Precision Parks locate on 700, excuse me, 447 acres of M2 zoned land. And in my mind, the McAdams Industrial Park supporting industrial use for this area and neighborhood, as does the frontage along I-20 and then just the access along State Route 100. The local market for most any new development is extremely limited. To my knowledge, other than the proposed environmental industrial park, there is no evidence of any potential development of the subject that would provide an adequate return on investment. The subject land could remain as a timber tract with future potential for only scattered rural residential uses for many years into the future, making only a marginal contribution to the overall economy of the county. The current A1 zoning severely limits the use opportunities and limits prospects for future economically viable or beneficial development. Denial of the requested zoning would prevent the property from being developed for a more feasible and economically viable use. Thus, the current zoning of the property is a significant detriment to its unrealized economic potential. That was, pretty much concludes my study of the local market area. Then I go and inspect four operating landfills around the state of Georgia, in North Georgia. These were identified. I personally drove by and inspected each one. Before going to those landfills, I got on Georgia Multiple Listing Service and the local tax assessor's websites, and identified the sales that have taken place in those areas. And I focused on sales generally from 2017 to 2020. I did this study in 2020. I know we're in 2022 now, but my study was done in 2020. So, that's the reason I focused on land sales, real estate sales from 2017 up until 2020. When I gathered those sales, I printed them off. I have good, hard copies of those in files in my office. It's a thick file of sales information that I have. I couldn't present all those here today by any means. So, at these landfills, I drove by and observed those sales, most all of them. There was one landfill that's, landfill that has much activity around it. I couldn't look at all the sales, but I looked at quite a few. So...
Mr. Bass, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to let the applicant know that they have about 10 minutes left.
Okay. Okay. The first, the first, next slide. I went to the Turkey Run landfill in Meriwether County. I found, it's on 418 acres, between 2013 and 2019, there were 17 land and house sales within one mile of that landfill. The Athens-Clark County landfill, which we have right...
Athens-Clark.
No, that's not it. Going back up. Athens-Clark County landfill, over two and a half miles outside of Athens. It's on 444 acres. It identified 64 land and house sales within 1.5 miles of the landfill. And Pine Bluff in Cherokee County, opened in 1994. It's on 960 acres. Identified 45 land and house sales within 1.5 miles of that landfill. And some of these houses are $400,000 and $500,000 houses in really close proximity. We have a time-lapse video. Do we have time to do that? Of the Buford, Richland landfill in Buford, this is a time-lapse photo, a video that's going to start off in 2021, back up to 1985, then 1999, and then it's going to come forward. And you can kind of observe in 2021, 1985, there's some development around it. You see Lake Lanier real close to it. The landfill is here. There's Lake Lanier. That's within one mile of the lake is the landfill. This is 1993. Hardly any development around it. 1999, we're coming forward. 2002, a couple of elementary schools. 2005, more residential development is taking place. You can see that. 2008, a couple of more schools built 1.5 miles, 1.4 miles from the landfill. This is 2018, even more development, intense. 2021, we have Lake Lanier, Buford Dam. We have a Shoal Creek water intake where they're getting water for public use. There are nine schools within 2.2 miles of this property, loads of residential subdivisions. These range from 130 to $400,000 houses, and some of them are within 600 feet, 500 feet of the landfill. One other quick summary I'd like to make, if I could. I had too much stuff to cover. So, I looked at residential land sales in the, recently, that have taken place at the subject landfill, the subject property. So, residential sales within one mile, excluding the Gold Creek subdivision, from January of 2019 to May of '20, when this project was announced, there were 12 sales. This is within one mile of the subject. This is within one mile of the subject. Between May 21 of 2020 and December of 2021, there were 10 sales, just about the same number of sales. This did not include Gold Creek subdivision. I did that separately. Residential sales between one and three miles of the subject, from January of 2019 to May of '20 of 2020, there were 40 sales. From May 21 of 2020 to December of 2021, there were 40 sales. No change in the activity. In Gold Creek, from September 2018 to May of 2020, there were seven sales. From May of 2020 to December 2021, there were seven sales. Of those seven sales each period, three of them were the same property reselling, and in all three instances, there was a significant increase in price, even after the announcement of this project. So, oh, I can just say, this market evidence indicates that with the proposed buffers for the Vindicator Environmental Industrial Park, residential uses, including both existing and new development in the area, will not be adversely impacted. And from this significant market evidence, I conclude the highest, best use, and most feasible and economically productive use of the 2,047 acres is for the proposed Vindicator Environmental Industrial Park. Thank you.
I will try to stay close to the microphone, but I have papers to handle, so I'm going to put it back in there. Good morning, Chairman Smith, members of the commission, Mr. Williams, Mr. McCain, Ms. Henderson, Mr. Dewberry. We thank you for your time and attention today. It's a lot.
May I speak just?
Okay, just to members of the planning commission, we thank you very much for your, excuse me, time and attention to all of this information, and all the time and attention you put to the application materials. We know there's a lot of information in there, a lot of facts, a lot of diagrams, a lot of studies. We tried to boil it down for you as much as we could to the, to the most relevant and material facts and information that you need to make your decision, and we tried to do that as well today. I'm Bob Norman. I'm an attorney, and along with Joe Fowler, who's an attorney, local attorney from Douglasville area, we have been advising solid solutions throughout this process from day one of the legal aspects of a project, in particular of the zoning requirements, and to make sure that all of the elements of the zoning criteria in the ordinance were, have been addressed. And we think we've achieved that objective, and we'll address some of those further. Obviously, we can't address everything in an hour and a half in, in the application materials, so we've tried to focus on the most important. We are both, well, let me go ahead. One thing I need to do is submit several documents for the record of the hearing today, if I may do that very quickly. The first document is just a certified copy of the zoning ordinance. The second document is a copy of the DRI, the RDC, Northwest Georgia RDC DRI report that was alluded to earlier, and I think everybody knows that the DRI process is a process for local governments in the area, local agencies, to be aware of and consider significant development projects in the area. And that was reviewed, this project was reviewed by the RDC and those agencies, and none of those agencies had adverse comments to this project, and I think that's important for your consideration. The last thing I want to put in the record is a copy of a letter from Mr. Fowler that was in the early materials. They simply discussed as the Georgia law, this applicable zoning decisions. And that's important because these criteria that we're going to discuss, and that you have already, obviously, I'm sure have been explained by the county attorney, and judging by the fact they're attached to the procedure, you understand the importance of those criteria, applying those criteria to the facts, not only for the commissioners to make their final decision, but for this planning commission to make your recommendation. And if I may, I'm just going to hand those to Ms. Wade for the record. I just want to talk in the rest of my time, and Mr. Jackson, could you tell me how much time?
We've got about four or five minutes.
Okay, thank you. I want to talk about the facts a little, and then talk about the criteria and how they apply to the facts. You know, facts can be stubborn things. They're still the facts even when numbers of people want to try to, want to deny them or distort them, or just decline to accept the facts or to understand the facts. The facts here are all in these materials. The facts are the size of the property, 2,047 acres, the extensive buffers, the design of the industrial park, and location, the location of the entrance road, the surrounding area, the facts of other uses in the surrounding area that are not incompatible with the project that we're proposing for this site. All of the facts you've heard today, the hydrogeology, the geology, the proximity to I-20 and Highway 100, the fact that this area is intended, at least by the city of Tallapoosa, as for commercial and industrial development, to take advantage of its proximity to Interstate 20. Those are all facts, and there are a lot of other facts, obviously, that you've heard and seen in the application materials. And you are, the criteria that, well, let me ask, let me add this. In contrast to those facts, there have been a lot of allegations against this facility over time that it's been public. Some have been based on misinformation, I'm sure, innocent misinformation, lack of understanding of, understandable lack of understanding of the technology and the science that goes into a project like this by ordinary people. Some of it's been scare tactics, frankly, and misinformation spread by some who either oppose, just opposed to the project based on emotion or other reasons. Those are not the sort of facts that are contemplated by the ordinance and the criteria to be considered in your decision. The objective facts are the facts that underlie your decision and underlie the criteria. And, you know, it's when emotions are high like this, like they have been here, that objective facts, fair and objective evaluation of those facts can sometimes get lost and be in jeopardy. So we, we hope and believe and trust that all of you will look at the facts, the real facts, the genuine facts that you've seen, heard today, seen in the application, and apply these criteria. The other facts are the results of all of these professional studies and the conclusions they've reached, and they've all been discussed. I'm not going to take the time to go over them again. Those are facts. In particular, the criteria, and if you go to the next, let me go to the next slide with the criteria, please. One more.
And we got about a minute left.
Okay. In particular, the Land Value Impact Report prepared by Mr. Bass, and a separate report prepared called a Land Use Compatibility Report. I hope you've had a chance to look at that. There, Tom Robertson, who's both an engineer and a certified land planner, evaluated every one of these criteria and addressed each criteria in detail in his report. And time doesn't allow me to go through each of those, but I just want to read something from his report that summarizes his evaluation as a land planner and engineer of this project. "From a land planning standpoint, the proposed site is an ideal location for developing an environmentally sound, solid waste landfill and associated soil excavation operations on adjoining land ancillary to the landfill operation. The project activities will take place within a large site that will be entirely buffered. All required environmental and operating permits must be obtained prior to construction and commencement of operations. The planned mixed-use industrial park is a logical and favorable location for development of such an industrial park. Potential impacts to the surrounding properties associated with the waste disposal facility and the industrial park will be minimal or neutral. The project represents the highest and best use of both the proposed landfill property and the industrial park property," as you've heard Mr. Bass say as well. "The proposed uses are consistent with the goal policies."
Mr. Norman, I will say that the applicant will have some time at the end for rebuttal, so it might be good if we save the rest for that.
Well, obviously, I'm out of time. I wanted to finish that. We may bring that up later, but thank you for your time today and your consideration for this application.
We'll take a 10-minute break at this time.
Yes.
All right, we're ready to get started?
Okay, now we'll have time for the opposition group to speak. I believe Ms. Brass is the attorney representing the opposition group, and she can introduce the group and her speakers. And if everybody could keep the microphone close to their mouth so that everybody can hear in the audience.
Y'all tell me if you can hear me? No. Is this better?
Yeah.
All right. So I've got my assistant, Vanna White, over there. I'm Jacqueline Brass. I'm from Stackin Associates, and we're here on behalf of the Harrelson County Alliance for Responsible Waste Management. I want to first say thank you all for doing this. I know it's a volunteer position. I know this is a lot of time out of your day and a lot of effort, and we really appreciate it. So we've just handed you some packets, our submission. There's absolutely no way that I can go through point by point and hit everything. We'd be here until midnight, and I know we all have better things to do. So much of what we need to say is in that letter that you have. It's a letter of about 26 pages and then several exhibits, and it's going to go through point by point through those 12 zoning review factors that you heard so much about and address why this plan is not consistent with those and that the balance weighs in favor of recommending denial. I also, before we jump into it, want to apologize. My boss, Don Stack, is supposed to be giving this speech, and he really wishes he could be here. He got stuck in the mountains, got snowed in, which I know was really hard for him, both because he wanted to be here and also a little bit on his ego because he's from Buffalo, New York. So the fact that he can't get out is probably a little difficult. He's also watching from home, so we'll see if I have a job after this. So what we have here on our map, you saw a lot of maps, a lot of diagrams, page after page of information in that application, consultant after consultant paid by the applicant to tell you why this is a great plan. But what we have here in this opposition map, you can see, is every yellow point there is a person that's opposed, a family that's opposed, to this proposal in Harrelson County. And, you know, the reason I'm not going to take up too much of your time today is because what I say as the attorney, I don't matter that much. The people in this room, the people that live here, they're who matters. So I'm also going to ask here, if we can have everyone here that is opposed to this proposal, opposed to the landfill, to please raise your hands. I think that that about covers it. We also have more than 3,000 signatures at, I believe it's more than 3,200 signatures at last count on various petitions. And if I've done my math correctly, which I'm an attorney, so it's possible that I didn't, it's about 15% of the adult population of Harrelson County. So, gonna jump into it now. You heard a lot about the zoning review factors, and I'm going to talk about a few of them, as I said, more detailed in that letter. But I really want to talk about the purpose of zoning, the reason you have those 12 zoning review factors that deal with suitability and whether this plan is compatible with the area, with the comprehensive plan, which it isn't, is because of the purpose of zoning. And the purpose of zoning, and y'all's job, is to protect the health, safety, and general well-being for the entire community and ensure positive growth, smart growth. It was first upheld by the Supreme Court of the United States in 1926, way back in 1926. And since that time, the United States Supreme Court has, time and time again, talked about how important zoning is. In fact, they said that zoning may indeed be the most essential function performed by local government, for it is one of the primary means by which we protect the sometimes difficult-to-defined concept of quality of life. That's really what it comes down to here today, is protecting Harrelson's County quality of life for the people that live here, the people that will live here in the future, and the environment, et cetera. One of the ways that the county has worked hard to preserve that quality of life and has done a really great job at it is through the comprehensive plan, the joint comprehensive plan, which was most recently updated in 2017. It's also one of the factors to consider under the zoning review factors. It was adopted after significant amount of collaboration, public meetings, research, SWOT analyses, et cetera. Basically, you've got a really well-thought-out comprehensive plan. You did a great job, and it's doing a great job of achieving its purpose of protecting the quality of life and creating orderly and rational development to keep Harrelson County attractive, economically viable, preserve the important natural and historic resources, and attract desirable, attractive industry and businesses. There's also a future land use map, which you saw from the applicant, and, you know, they said a lot of things. They tried to kind of hide the ball a little bit here, but the truth is that the proposal does not conform with the plan. It does not fit with the future land use plan. On that plan, on that map, you saw that it's supposed to remain agricultural and forestry. This inconsistency with the plan alone is a very good reason to recommend denial of this proposal. Supreme Court of Georgia agrees with that, and in diversified holdings made clear that sticking to the comprehensive plan is a valid reason to deny a rezoning request that will be upheld on appeal. The county got it right here. Touching on those 11 other zoning review factors, this is special land, and you're going to hear a lot more about this from the people who are more familiar with this land than I am. I'm from Rome, so not too far away, but not right here. This is special land. It's known for its archaeology. It's known for its ecology, for the people that live in the area and tend to it and have tended to it for generations. You heard that this is pretty industrial land. You heard that this 2047 undeveloped, beautiful acres is in an industrial area. But the zoning belies that fact. If it was an industrial area, it would be zoned for industry. If it was in an industrial area, you would show on the future land use map that Harrelson County planned and thought about and considered, you would see that they considered that to be future industrial area, and that's not true. It's home to many creeks, many streams, providing habitat for countless threatened, rare, and indigenous species. The Georgia-Alabama Land Trust knows that. It's a land trust protecting thousands and thousands of acres across the South, and they actually have agreed to conserve almost 300 acres directly adjacent to this proposed site because it's important and it should be protected. We've included an article about that, and I believe it's Exhibit E, the last one, in there. But again, and it comes down to it, this trifecta of heavy industrial uses, because it is a trifecta, you've got a surface mine, you've got a massive regional landfill that's going to be 300 acres and accept somewhere between 750 and 4,000 tons of trash per day, which just diminishes, and Harrelson County is 40,000 tons per year, and that's an overestimate. This simply wouldn't be good for the community. The real beneficiary here is, when it comes down to it, the applicant. And they wanted to paint you a pretty picture about how it's a win-win situation, but when it comes down to it, this benefits their bottom line, nobody else's bottom line. This benefits them to the detriment of the community. You've heard about how the site chose itself. That's not true. The dollar signs chose this site. The appraiser, you heard him say, that the highest and best use really was a factor of what's the best return on investment for the applicant, not what's the best for the county, not how it would be detrimental to the surrounding-[1433.61][1433.61](applause)
Please hold your applause. Thank you.
Not how it would be suitable for the area, not how the county needs this or wants this. You know, the truth is, if this landfill was such a great idea, counties would be jumping at the bit to get it in their county. You know, all the places they went through, all the sites that weren't good enough, why aren't those counties asking for this? And crucially, in those 12 zoning review factors, there's not a factor for making the applicant the most money possible. Zoning doesn't protect the pockets of the applicant. We're not here to rezone, to make the owner more money than it currently could be made on the property. The purpose of zoning, again, is to protect the quality of life of Harrelson County. It's true, they put on a great presentation, they spent a lot of money on it, a lot of money on the consultants you heard, on the setup here, on the 3D model, it's a great model. They spent a ton of money and a hefty, hefty price tag that the citizens here, that our clients, don't have. But the thing that our clients do have is the fact that they live here. Solid Solutions doesn't. Mr. Kaufman doesn't have to stay here. They don't have to be here in 10 years, 20 years, 50 years. Their children won't be here 70 years, 100 years. And we already know that they sold the Meriwether Turkey Run landfill, the landfill that they point out time and time again in their case studies as being the ideal, prime, gold star event. But speaking of that landfill, what they didn't say was that in 2021, they had two separate groundwater testing events that showed the presence of VOCs, volatile organic compounds. One in May, and then retested again in August, and groundwater wells had picked up VOCs. And, you know, this falls in line with the fact that all landfills leak. The EPA itself, you heard about the subtitle D, the regulations and why this is safe, the EPA itself, when they were promulgating those standards in the late 80s, put on the record that all landfills leak or will eventually leak. Now just imagine, if it's already an issue, what'll happen in 10 years, and 50 years, and 70 years? The permitting that they talked about, you heard quite a bit about the nested permits, the state, federal regulations, but what you didn't hear is that all of that is technically a floor, a minimum. It's not fully protective of health and human safety. It's not made to ensure the quality of life of every citizen in Harrelson County. That's your job. The state and federal laws, they have minimum requirements. In other words, the permits, those nested permits that you have to obtain, that you talked so much about, those are permits to pollute. They are literally a license to pollute. I don't need to tell you, again, that there are also massive issues with agency staffing and monitoring, and there's just simply not enough people in the state to come out and monitor every surface mine, landfill, et cetera, on the basis that would be ideal. So it falls out to self-reported. Whoever's running this landfill will be self-reporting much of the information that they find. That's asking the fox to guard the hen house. Now, I said I wasn't going to talk about each and every point. I'm not going to negate it, and I don't want to take up too much of your time because the community is who you should really listen to and hear from. But I do want to say that they have been transparent. They have engaged with the public and done a lot of work, a lot of PR, hired a lot of people, spent a lot of money to do this. But unfortunately for them, transparency doesn't make them compliant with the 12 zoning review factors. Simply not suitable for this area, this 2,000 massive parcel that they want to rezone every acre of, 2,000 acres to be rezoned to industrial, meaning you could use heavy industrial uses on every single acre of that currently pristine, undeveloped, really special land. Let me make sure that I hit everything that I wanted to hit. The last thing I wanted to say was, you heard a lot about the community using scare tactics. The community isn't using scare tactics. The community is scared, rightfully so, because they want to protect their quality of life and that of their children, the environment, the soil, the air we breathe, the water that they rely on, the farms downstream will rely on, and that will rely on for generations to come while there is still literal garbage buried in a pit. So once again, I'm going to say this is not the right decision for Harrelson County. Really appreciate your time here. The zoning review factors, much more detailed in that submission, including a list of 500 or so well-thought-out reasons from some of the 3,000 petitioners. There's a lot of information in there, so I hope that you will have time to review that. I really appreciate your time today. I'm going to hand it off to, we have several other members of the alliance who are going to speak. The next one is going to be Johnny Wright, and if we have time at the end, I might come up here and make a few closing remarks.
My name is Johnny Wright, and I'm the co-chair of the Harilson Alliance for Responsible Waste Management. The other co-chair is Scott Cosper, who will be also speaking today. I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman and zoning board, for this opportunity to speak. We appreciate you all for your service to the county in this position. And also on behalf of the Alliance, I would like to thank everyone for their attendance today. I think this is an amazing crowd, and it speaks of the importance of this issue to Harilson County. I know many, many of these people had to get off of work to be here at 10 o'clock this morning on a weekday. So thank you, county, for showing up this morning. And I also want to, I'd like to encourage everyone here that speaks today, everyone in attendance, to remember to be courteous and respectful to the board today. And again, we thank you for this opportunity to speak. With regard to the proposed mega landfill by Solid Solutions, Harilson Alliance believes the underlying question that Harilson County's, countyans are concerned with is, would the proposed Solid Solutions mega landfill be a benefit or a detriment to Harilson County? Harilson Alliance believes the negatives of such a project far outweigh the positives. The West Georgia region does not have a need for a new landfill for waste generated by our area. The proposed mega landfill, which would be the largest by far in the state of Georgia, over 44% bigger than the current largest landfill, would primarily be receiving trash from areas outside of West Georgia, most likely Metro Atlanta and other large metropolitan areas. We prefer for these large metropolitan areas to find solutions for their own waste management instead of shipping their waste to Harilson County. In their PR campaign, and I've heard some refer to it as propaganda frankly, Solid Solutions promotes what a, quote, "perfect location," and we heard it today, a perfect location Harilson County is for this regional mega landfill, and how the landfill will only be a few hundred yards off the interstate with minimal impact to traffic. However, the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission Impact Study projects that in the opening year, 2025, additional traffic of 416 trips per day, and by 2040, additional traffic will increase to 1,917 trips per day. Now, assuming a 10-hour day from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., that would be initially an additional 42 vehicles per hour at the opening. And within 15 years, the increase, that would increase to almost an additional 200 vehicles per hour. Now, traffic congestion is already difficult at I-20 and Highway 100, but just imagine the traffic impact with this many additional vehicles, many of which would be large or huge garbage trucks at the intersection of Highway 100 and I-20, especially trying to make left turns to get onto Highway 100 from the landfill, and then trying to make left-hand turns to get onto I-20. No way, in my opinion, that that could be handled at that intersection. Solid Solutions also claims in their application and their PR materials that the landfill will be hidden from view from most places in the area. But please understand the magnitude, the size of the proposed mega landfill. The elevation of Tally Mountain is 1,522 feet and is a very visible landmark in the area, especially from Highway 100 south of I-20 and from I-20 coming from Alabama. And I would like to state here that Solid Solutions in this, in this model presented here today, I want to invite folks to look at this after the meeting today, but Tally Mountain is hardly noticeable, which causes me to question the accuracy and the validity of this model. And this being noted, again, I want to state that the elevation of Tally Mountain is 1,522 feet. According to Solid Solutions' application, the expected elevation of the proposed mega landfill will be 1,402 feet. That's only about 100 feet shy of the elevation of Tally Mountain. This is huge, and the landfill would be very visible from I-20 and Highway 100 south of the interstate. In fact, after entering Georgia from Alabama, this would be one of the first things you see in Georgia. Regarding Solid Solutions' desire to build this mega landfill and saying that Harilson County is, quote, "one of the most perfect locations ever for such a landfill," this is akin to a rich person who lives in a mansion in a wealthy neighborhood, going to a poor neighborhood and saying, "Oh, you have just the perfect location for us to bring our trash. It doesn't matter that you don't want it, you must understand that it is just the perfect location for it, and we will even pay you lots of money to take it. You just need to understand how good this is going to be for your homes and your neighborhood, and it will even make more people want to move into your neighborhood and help you grow." This sounds preposterous, but this is, in effect, what Solid Solutions is proposing for our county. To you, our zoning board, and ultimately the commissioners, I want to remind you that you have the power, and based on the community sentiment, I believe the obligation to say no to this rich person wanting to forever change our county. And regarding the sentiment of our community, think about how many people have told you that they are in favor, that they are in favor of this landfill versus how many have told you they are against it. And I want to present to you today 164 pages about 32 names of citizens from this area who have registered their opposition to this landfill. And many of the people in the audience today worked very hard to get these names on petitions. So I will be presenting these to Ms. Wade for your, for your reference afterward. Of this number, approximately 42% of these individuals have Talapusa addresses, 39% have Bremen or Waco addresses, and 11% Buchanan addresses, with 8% from other areas not listing addresses. Additionally, we have 35 pages of comments from individuals who signed our online petition, and those comments are included in our attorney's packet to you. You'll find those, 35 pages. And I would just like to read three of the comments, which provide insights on issues I have not otherwise addressed in this presentation. From page one of the comments, a petitioner writes, "I live within a couple of miles of the proposed landfill. Walker's Creek flows very close to the area being proposed and comes within 300 yards of my house. I worry the creek and water supply for miles will be polluted and impacted. Walker's Creek flows to the Talapusa River, which would also be impacted. I think there are better solutions instead of disrupting a whole community where people live and it would never be the same and could negatively impact lives in this area for generations." From page 29, another petitioner writes, "Harilson County is where I was born, raised, and lived for over 69 years. Development is necessary for any community, but just to throw your hands up and give in to a big corporation that has no investment in maintaining our way of life is shameful. It is, if this is such a great opportunity, why then is Harilson County not having to compete with all the other counties and states to acquire the right to get this? Seems like the developers are just trying to push it down our throats. And the developers, are the developers going to live here and actually spend time and resources in this county, or just run a remote operation with their corporate core leaving the county? I vote a resounding no for this atrocity and hope the board immediately puts a stop to this fiasco." And finally, from page five, another petitioner writes, "Accepting the landfill proposal would be like letting in a roommate that is impossible to evict. Despite claims of transparency and safety, there is no real recourse for the county beyond a costly lawsuit should the proprietor not live up to their promises. The proprietor is not a Harilson County resident and will not have to live with the infrastructure he is proposing, but we will. Future generations of Harilson County residents will find themselves at risk, perhaps indefinitely, with reduced air and water quality, odors, and heavier traffic through our already congested downtown areas." Again, there are 35 pages of comments like these from concerned citizens who are asking you to deny this request, and we thank them for their, taking their time to provide their input. Another claim by Solid Solutions is that it is a, quote, "myth that landfills stink." While it may be true that landfill odors are not always noticeable, there is plenty of evidence of horrible problems with landfill odors all over the country. A current example is of a landfill in the twin cities of Bristol, Virginia and Bristol, Tennessee. This is a landfill that was opened in 1998, seven years after Subtitle D was enacted, which created a lot of new, as we heard, creates a lot of new regulations that supposedly make landfills much safer than prior to 1991. In an article, in an article by WJHL Channel 11 in Johnson City, Tennessee, dated December 20, December 7, 2021, just one month ago, the headline states, quote, "We all feel helpless. Bristol, Tennessee City Schools Sends Call to Families Impacted by Landfill Odor." The following is a transcript of the call sent to families in the school system. "For some of our families, a growing concern in recent months has been the impact of the odors and gases coming from the Bristol, Virginia landfill. I want to assure you that we have standards for the air quality inside our buildings, and providing a safe environment for students and staff is our top priority. We are taking several steps to evaluate and reduce the impact and will continue to do so." And the article goes on to say, "Chris Berger is a parent of a five-year-old who lives in the city limits. He explained that his house was built in 1910, and though he's tried everything, he can't seem to get the gas, keep the gases from reaching his child." Quote, "I mean, there is no real way of sealing it up, keeping it out. When the smell comes in, if it's a six or a seven outside, it's probably an eight or nine inside my house because it sits there and it just keeps intensifying. It's a small house, and I mean, there's no way of keeping it out," he explained. He said, "Once it enters his home, it takes hours to dissipate. I've gotten two air purifiers. It's really, really strong when it comes in, and it stays all night. We do feel hopeless because we own our house, and there's nowhere for us to escape. If you try to go run to a hotel or something like that, it's right outside. It's all over Bristol. That's the problem," Berger said. "There's many nights, there's been many nights that we've got in our van and drove a couple of hours just to get fresh air." End quote. Many homeowners told News Channel 11, "There's no easy way out. Quote, 'No one's going to buy our home. We don't have the option to go somewhere else to buy a new home. It's a financial burden, and we're just stuck.'" And another article by the same News Channel 11 dated September 14, 2021, just a few months ago, is entitled, quote, "Bristol, Virginia Updates Public on Plans to Reduce Landfill Odors." The article states that, quote, "The push for odor reduction comes after a year of complaints from residents in Bristol, Virginia and Tennessee. Joel Kellogg lives about two miles from the landfill, but weather and wind carry the smell to his residence. Kellogg said it is so pungent, it gets into his house and takes away his ability to sleep. The odor has also raised serious health concerns for residents. In July 2021, city leaders said there was no health risk coming from the odor despite finding high levels of the carcinogen benzene appearing in tests. First Presbyterian Church of Bristol, Virginia pastor Samuel Weddington said, 'The smell gets into his worship hall during service and causes irritation for congregation members.'" Quote, "Headaches, nausea, some people with migraine issues having that aggravated asthmatic attacks, people can't even breathe in their own homes," Weddington said. And that's the end of that article. Now again, please note that this Bristol, Virginia landfill was built to Subtitle D specifications, which has been talked about today, and these serious odor and health issues surfaced 20 years after the landfill was built, 20 years after the landfill was built. So please, let this example in Bristol, Virginia be an illustration to you that the recommendation you make today and the decision our county commissioners make will have lasting impacts for generations to come. If you vote to recommend this landfill, it will be irreversible. We can never go back." Another claim that Solid Solutions makes is that this regional landfill and industrial park will bring hundreds of new jobs and new industry to Harilson County. My colleague Tommy Crawford will be talking more about economic impacts, but I just want to say with regard to this project bringing hundreds of new jobs to the county, I believe this defies common sense. What business owners would desire to bring their businesses, homes, and families to a county that has the largest landfill in the state? And to put their business in an industrial park that shares a drive with landfill, with a landfill with garbage truck traffic every five minutes, or actually every two and a half minutes counting round trips? Think about that. It's common knowledge that landfills have a significant negative impact on property values, create bad odor, as I just discussed, generate heavy truck traffic, and most importantly, have potentially harmful environmental and health effects for decades to come. One quick example I know of here in our county regarding the impact on people's desire to move here is that local realtors have reported that prospective home buyers coming here to Harilson County to view properties see the, quote, "no landfill" signs around the county and ask the realtor about what's going on. And then they quickly seem to lose interest in purchasing in Harilson County until this issue is resolved. Next, regarding the proposed host fee revenues the mega landfill would generate for the county and municipalities. Harilson Alliance believes that any host fee, any landfill host fee revenues paid to the county would be more than offset by diminished property values and loss of future economic growth caused by a mega landfill. And of course, there is no price that can be placed on harmful health and environmental impacts likely to affect our children and grandchildren. The proposal of a regional mega landfill in Harilson County has brought to light the need for our county to focus on alternatives to traditional waste management. Harilson Alliance supports recycling, and we urge you as county leaders to explore efficient and cost-effective ways of increased recycling in our county. The final point I would like to make is this. Some people think that this will primarily affect Buncombe and Talapusa and the southwest corner of our county. But if you look at a map of the proposed landfill in the county, the landfill would actually be closer to the city of Waco than to Antioch Church in Buncombe. And I also want to note that the cities of Waco and Bremen lie due east, downwind, from the landfill site. This is an area with a much greater population, so this is an issue that definitely affects most of the population of Harilson County. Again, I want to thank you for this opportunity to address the board, and with all sincerity, ask you to recommend today to our county commissioners to deny this request for rezoning. And please remember that if this landfill is approved, it will forever change our county, and there is no going back. The detrimental impact will be irreversible. And one other note item that came to mind as I was listening to the other side present, we heard several- present, we heard several expert today, experts today talk about how great this landfill would be for our community, exceeding all the required specifications, and, and listening to them, you would think nothing could ever go wrong with this project. But I want to remind you, the board, that experts also said the Titanic could never sink, and what happened on the first, we all know. As I said before, you have the power to say no to this request, which will forever change our county, and we ask you to deny this request. And I want to thank you for your consideration, and I would like to provide the board with copies of the petition as well as a copy of the map that displays a distribution of those who have signed our petition thus far. You'll see a pretty evenly spaced distribution of, of petition signers throughout our county. So thank you very much, and I would like now turn it over to Co-Chair Scott Cosper.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Cosper. Most people think my job was running a wedding venue, but actually I'm a real estate developer and have been for thirty years. I do both commercial and residential, mostly in the state of Alabama. When I first came out, when it first came out, I was looking at it not only as a resident, but as a businessman also. I believe I was one of the first group of people that Solid Solutions contacted. I have had numerous meetings with them, including touring the proposed landfill site here in Harrelson County and the landfill in Merriweather County that they talk about. I believe they would say, if anything, that I have been fair to them. I have always met with them most of the time. When I toured the Merriweather facility, we started in the industrial park, which borders I-85 there, and it consisted of maybe three pretty good-sized businesses. Then I could see off in the distance, a large grass. It was very, very large, and I was told that that was actually a trash sale that they was building up and had been built up from years. I was surprised not only by the size of the mountain, but also of the buzzards and everything that was flying over it. The grass concealed what was really there, but it still looked very big and out of place. We continued around the boundary of the landfill, and we did lose sight of the mountain. One thing that really concerned me, though, was all the way around the perimeter, all the houses appeared to have been built before the landfill. There was no new construction, and maybe the landfill wasn't a deterrent to new homes. We got behind a trash truck as we made our way into the entrance of the landfill. The odor was really bad, and I thought about what it would be like sitting behind one at exit five off, off I-20. We then stopped and rested at the office, and then made our way up to the top of the sale, and the truck that we were behind was already dumping his load. In our short time at this site, we encountered three different trash trucks from three different areas. My question is that if this landfill was so great as it is being advertised, we would be fighting other counties to have it instead of fighting to keep it out. In closing, if this comes to fruition, you can forget that Tallapoosa being the Dogwood City and Bremen being the Gateway City will be forever known as home of Georgia's largest landfill. Thank you. And I want to turn it over to Tommy.
I had a "good morning" on my notes, but I think a "good afternoon" is probably more appropriate. My name's Tommy Crawford. I'd like to thank the zoning board members for their willingness to serve our county, and I also have the opportunity to present to you. I'm a Harrelson County resident, and I have been for fifty years. My wife and I both work and own a business in Harrelson County. Solid Solutions is proposing a three-hundred-acre mega landfill to be built in our county. To put this in perspective, this would be by far the largest landfill in the state of Georgia. Solid Solutions stated that their proposed landfill would have an area of three-hundred acres on a two-thousand-acre site, and according to a March twenty-twenty U.S. Environmental Protection Agency spreadsheet, currently the largest landfill in Georgia is two-hundred-and-ten acres, and I think Johnny already covered that, that's on a five-hundred-and-sixty-acre site. That's a hundred and two, forty-two percent increase. Additionally, it would be at an elevation of approximately fourteen-hundred feet, only a hundred and twenty-two feet shorter than neighboring Tally Mountain. This would make it, make the mega landfill the fourth highest point in the county. So the question is, why? Why do we need a landfill in Harrelson County? For our waste? No. Our waste is currently sent to an existing landfill in Polk County, approximately thirty-five miles away, as is the waste of many surrounding cities and counties. The existing Polk County landfill has remaining capacity of twenty-seven to fifty years worth of waste and possibly more with additional expansion. In case you're wondering, if you combine all the landfills in Georgia, there would be current, there will currently be twenty-six thousand years of capacity, according to the EPD website. Do we need it because of the potential job and tax base creation from industrial development that's proposed with this landfill? The answer is also no. Even with the proposed development, there are currently at least five private industrial developers that are either actively seeking property, have executed options to purchase property, or have already purchased property to be, to be developed. The Harrelson County Development Authority currently has three active projects that have the potential to create six-hundred-and-thirty-five jobs and a six, sixty-million-dollar capital investment. The Development Authority is also working on the acquisition and development of a two-hundred-plus acre tract that would create over three million square foot of industrial space. Additionally, Zinc Global, in partnership with Carol MC, is working on a multi, multi-county broadband network that would have a capital investment of nearly thirty million dollars in Harrelson County alone. Once completed, this broadband availability would have positive impact on the county in all types of development, including industrial, commercial, and residential. It is evident that economic growth in Harrelson County is already happening and will continue to happen without the proposed mega landfill. It's also reasonable to contend that the mega landfill will have negative impacts on job creation and tax revenue. Perhaps the most comprehensive of the independent studies is a two thousand and five report, "Do Landfills Always Depress Nearby Property Values?" In this report, Northeast Regional Center for Rural Development researcher reviewed nine studies on landfill property value effects conducted in six states and Ontario. Each of nine studies examined the value of a large number of properties in the vicinity of landfills. The researcher concluded that a high-volume landfill, which is greater than five hundred tons per day, reduces the value of adjacent residential properties by twelve-point-nine percent. The impact of high-volume landfills decreases by five-point-nine for each mile between a landfill and a residential property out to two to three miles. And according to Appendix C in the applicant's traffic study, the Solid Solutions landfill receives seven-hundred-and-fifty to four-thousand waste tons a day. Let me go back. Greater than five hundred tons per day is considered a high-volume landfill. This, this project could reach eight times that daily threshold. That's up to eight million pounds of garbage a day. Two thousand and ten census data shows that there are two-hundred-and-seventy-eight to seven-hundred-and-ninety-two residences within that two to three miles of the landfill proposed by Solid Solutions. Therefore, the property value loss could be considerable if the landfill is approved. According to the National Association Realtor Site, Harrelson County home values average one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. So assuming an average of five-point-nine property value, five-point-nine percent property value loss, those seven-hundred-and-ninety-two homeowners within three miles could lose approximately eighty-five-hundred dollars each and collect nearly seven million dollars in property value. That's us, the citizens of Harrelson County, losing value in our homes if the proposal is approved. Any revenue generated by this project would be diminished by the loss in property value. This data supports what most of us already believe, that a landfill is not going to promote economic growth, but instead suppress it. So again, I ask, why do we need a mega landfill in Harrelson County? The answer is, we don't. The garbage that would be taken to the proposed mega landfill will come from all over Georgia, including metro Atlanta. It would seem that building a landfill a little closer to the origin of the trash would make more sense. However, in places like Fulton, Gwinnett, and Cobb County, the property there is much more expensive for the, in those counties, and our residents have much more money to support opposition to a project like this. Here in our county, the cost to attain property is much less, and our county is not wealthy. The proposed location was chosen for a reason. Money. The developer will complete the project, collect a large profit, and move on to the next unsuspecting community. I submit to you that this is not about need, it's solely about greed. Something as harmless as a nursing home is regulated so strictly that if you want to build one, you have to obtain a certificate of need that's issued by the Department of Social Services. If you recommend this approve, the approval of the rezoning request for this mega landfill, you will not be issuing a certificate of need, but a certificate of greed. Again, I want to thank each of you for your volunteer efforts for this county and you serving in your capacities. We thank you, and I thank you for the time to speak. I want to pray that your recommendation will be against what would be the largest landfill in the state of Georgia. I also have been asked to read a short article. If you Google Tallapoosa, Georgia, it starts off with Dogwood City, starts off with all these accolades of, of our community, things you'd be proud of. If you Google Uniontown, Alabama, the third entry is environmental injustice in Uniontown, Alabama. They're famous for it. And I can't read the whole article with, for lack of time, but I urge you, all you gotta do is Google Uniontown, Alabama, and go to the third hit, and you can read the whole article. It's published by the, by the American Bar dot org. But there's one section I would like to read. This, since Arrowhead landfill first opened in two thousand and seven, Uniontown residents have filed multiple complaints with the ADEM, and that's Alabama Department of Environmental Management, and test, and testified at public hearings. Then in two thousand and thirteen, thirty-five residents living within one mile of landfill and other interested persons submitted a complaint to the EPA's Office of Civil Rights alleging that the ADEM's decision to reissue and modify the operating permit for the Arrowhead landfill violated Title Four, Title Six, I'm sorry, of the Civil Rights Act nineteen-sixty-four. And this is, this is alluding to, and you'll see in the article, the allowance of coal ash. The complaint described several health and non-health impacts, including interference with sleep, frequent emission of odors, irritation of nose, throat, and eyes, dizziness, nausea, and increase in the vector population in and around homes close to the landfills, and increased noise from the operation of heavy machinery. Between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and eighteen, the complainants continued to submit additional letters, photographs, documentary evidence of these impacts. In addition, in two thousand and sixteen, the complainants filed a second complaint with the EPA, asking it to address the ADEM's failure to protect them from retaliation intimidation. After having exercised their civil rights to raise concerns about the landfill impacts, Arrowhead landfill filed a thirty-million-dollar lawsuit against the residents of the county in an attempt to silence them. Although the landfill eventually withdrew the suit, it was yet another way to target and threaten the community. I'm not saying that this group is capable of that, I'm just saying there is potential for something like this to happen. I do thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name's Alan Wilber. I'm a lifelong resident of Harrelson County. I've lived here over seventy years, except the time I went off to college. I've been asked to read a letter from a resident in Polk County, Georgia. Her name is Melanie Baxter, and it's addressed to the Harrelson County Zoning Board and the Harrelson County Board of Commissioners, and it's regarding the Harrelson County landfill. Says, "Dear sirs, I've been asked by the Harrelson County residents to give my thoughts and concerns on installing a landfill in Harrelson County. I live in Polk County on Grady Road, the same road as the Polk County landfill, also known to locals as Trash Mountain. The landfill is approximately one mile from my home. I drive by the landfill at least twice a day, going to and from work, and several times on the weekends. Not only is the landfill an eyesore due to its size, it produces odors, runoff, and truck traffic. The odor from the landfill is not pleasant, especially in summertime. You can either smell the stench from the landfill or the chemicals used to treat the stench. Neither are pleasant. Using chemicals to treat the odor cannot be good for our environment. The runoff from the landfill is always very muddy. It flows onto the land across the road that runs into a fishing lake. I personally would not eat the fish from that lake. Even though the landfill has a liner, there isn't a guarantee that the water flowing off the landfill does not have harmful waste in it that could affect the wildlife living around the lake and the wildlife drinking from the lake. The landfill is open Monday through Friday from five-thirty to four-thirty, and on Saturdays from seven AM to one PM. The large truck traffic is constant. It is very difficult to turn off Grady Road due to the trucks turning on too. Our road. The trucks leave a litter trail from the highway from the debris blowing out of them, even though they have their trucks covered. The trucks deliver trash from multiple counties, including Harrelson County. If I had a choice, Polk County landfill would only be filled with Polk County trash and debris. Thank you, Melanie Baxter." The only comment that I would like to make is I have learned in my seventy-five years of living that decisions have consequences. Quite often, those consequences are both positive and negative. You have immediate consequences, but sometimes there's long-range consequences to the decisions that we make. And unfortunately, we cannot always have the predictors that tell us what'll happen in a hundred years from now. The time in my hourglass is running out, but I have children and grandchildren. I was a school teacher for thirty years here in Harrelson County. Many of these people that are sitting here today are former students. Johnny Wright was a former student of mine. They will have children. I can, I'm concerned about the progenency. I'm concerned about the impact a hundred years from now, after all of us are already gone. I know that you have a difficult decision to make. I know there's pluses, I know there's minuses, and I know that you're not going to please everybody. There's someone that's going to be very unhappy with you. May God give you the grace to make your decision based on the evidence that you have and based on your own thinking and thoughts.
I'm Nancy Johnson Allen. I'm a lifelong resident of Buncombe Community, Harrelson County. Our farm has been in our family since nineteen and thirteen. Our granddaddy and daddy taught us to be good stewards of our land. My granddaddy always said, "God knows making any more land, so we've got to take care of it." And I would like to read a letter from another farm owner in our community to the Harrelson County zoning board members from David Robertson and his wife, Jan Cash Robertson. My wife and I would like to thank the zoning board for allowing this opportunity to publicly register our opposition to the proposed new landfill in Harrelson County. We are farmers, and our farm is located just to the west of the above-mentioned property along the banks of the Walker Creek. Based on our historical averages and data published by the National Chicken Council in December of twenty-twenty-one, my wife and I produce enough chicken to feed between twenty-five thousand and thirty thousand Americans, their annual consumption of chicken. To accomplish this numbers, we need our two million gallons of pure drinking water for the birds annually. The water that we require is produced from a well on our property. If that water were contaminated, we would be forced to shut down our poultry operation. Second, everything that I have worked for all my life is tied up in the value of our farm. It is our desire to continue farming as long as the Lord gives us strength to do so, but we know that age catches up with all of us, and one day the farm will be on the market. We feel that the proposed new landfill will be a detriment to us being able to market the farm, our home, for a fair price. We also produce hay on our bottom lands along the banks of the Walker's Creek. One thing we know is that Walker's Creek floods almost every year. It recently flooded on December the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, which was the fourth time in twenty-twenty-one. When it floods, it brings sand, silt, and other contaminants from up- When it floods, it brings sand, silt, and other contaminants from upstream and deposits on our fields. Most of the time, this is manageable, we know it's coming, and we try to time our harvest around the rainy times of the year. But then there were the years nineteen seventy-five, seventy-six, and seventy-seven, when due to the lack of erosion control from I-20 being constructed, two to three feet of sand and silt were deposited on our bottom pastures, effectively putting my mom and dad out of the dairy business. It has happened before, it can happen again. Next, there are those, our neighbors, who live closer than Jan and I do to this new landfill, who are opposed to this. Their lives and ways of life will be adversely affected due to stench and property values. We will not turn our backs and walk on the other side of the road when our neighbors are at risk. We must voice our opposition. And finally, we think of our children. Our families go back in this county to the eighteen forties and early eighteen fifties. The first sheriff of Harlson County, the original county surveyor, who laid out the plans for the city of Buchanan. There are doctors, pharmacists, decorated war heroes, nurses, preachers, missionaries, teachers, businessmen, women, and yes, farmers. We are from a long line of hard-working Harlson County citizens. We have a strong tie to the area and the land under consideration as prime real estate for the development of industry and jobs for our children and their children. And we believe above all to be true, we cannot and we will not stand silently by without registering our strongest legal opposition. We do not want our names to be associated with bringing a garbage dump into our county." And that's from David and Jan Robertson, who lives there on Georgia Highway one hundred. And just as a solid fact, we as farm owners and residents of that community and this county, a landfill is not what we want now nor for our future generations. And we pray that y'all make a heartfelt decision on that and think about the future of our county. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mindy Miller Moats. My family has been in Harlson County and specifically in downtown Tallapoosa for over a hundred and four years, operating Miller Funeral Home, and I hope and pray that we're here for many more years to come. I'm also proud to serve on the Harlson Alliance Board, and I have been asked to read another letter from a Polk County citizen. This is from Mr. Greg Hindman, who lives in Cedar Town. While I won't share his address out loud, I can confirm that his house is six point three miles from the Polk County landfill. In a letter dated January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, to the Harlson County Commissioners and Harlson County Zoning Board, it has come to my attention that you are considering whether or not to develop a new landfill in Harlson County. I would like to offer you my perspective as a resident and constituent of Polk County and my firsthand experience with the landfill we have here in our county. We currently have a landfill in Polk County located at three sixteen Grady Road, Rockmark, Georgia. This landfill has been open for many years, and it began as a landfill for only the waste of Polk County residents. However, several years ago, our county commissioners decided to allow companies to haul in waste from other counties in Georgia, as well as waste trucked in from Alabama. There's a steady stream of tractor-trailer trucks in and out of the landfill all hours of the day and night. What these trucks are hauling into our county is anyone's guess. We have personally watched these trucks roll in and out of the landfill unchecked for content. They simply roll across the scale, up to the top of the mountain of waste, and dump their load of acrid-smelling god-knows-what on the pile and head out for another load. I live approximately five to six miles, as the crow flies, from this landfill. When we have an easterly wind, I can smell the terrible odor from this mountain of waste at my home. I can't enjoy sitting outside for the smell. You can't drive within two miles of the landfill without smelling the horrible odor. There are thousands of people that live near this garbage mountain that cannot enjoy sitting outside, grilling a hamburger, or hosting a party outside because of the terrible stench. I recently cleaned out my garage and took a load of trash to the landfill. I was shocked at the terrible conditions and smell of the place. The pungent odor was almost more than I could stand for the ten to fifteen minutes it took for me to unload my trash. I had to take off my clothes and shoes as soon as I got home. I washed my shoes off outside, but the smell lingered in them for several days. I had to leave the doors open on my truck all day for it to air out, but the smell lingered in the upholstery for several days as well. I suggest you come to the Polk County landfill and experience this environmental disaster for yourselves. Our commissioners took away the ability of thousands of people to enjoy outdoor activities at their homes in exchange for the supposed benefits of the revenue received from allowing these outside counties and companies to dump their waste in our county. I fail to see any benefit our county has received from this revenue. I urge you to consider the environmental impact on the residents of Harlson County and not move forward with the development of the landfill. Our commissioners failed to do so, and now hundreds of families are paying the price. They are not able to enjoy simple outdoor activities that you and your families probably take for granted. Thank you for your time. Best regards, Greg Hindman." Thank you for allowing me the time to read this letter. Next, I'd like to call on July Nicholas.
We'll take a quick five-minute break before the next speaker, and then we'll get started again.
Attention everybody if we can come to order.
You can go ahead and get started. I have about thirty more minutes for the Harrelson Alliance.
If you would hand a picture down to each member, please. My name is July Nicholas and I live in the Buncombe community. I live in my great-grandparents' eighty-five-year-old farmhouse. My great-grandfather was preacher Levi Bates. He and my great-grandmother Lizzie had eight children and they owned at one time over a hundred acres in Buncombe. That's a picture of Levi and Lizzie on their wedding day. My parents came back to Buncombe in nineteen seventy-eight and started their own farm on the property with organic gardening and crafts. My mother had turned my great-grandparents' old farmhouse into a museum dedicated to the farmers of Harrelson County from the nineteen thirties and local schoolchildren would come and tour the property. This land that we live on is sacred. This land has been worked and lived on for hundreds of years by many generations. My husband and I farmed the land that my great-grandparents farmed. We have an organic garden as well and we also have a specialty breed of pigs and sheep. Air quality and water quality is of the utmost importance for our health as well as our animals' health. We are outside every day. A landfill would have a devastating impact on our health. I hope you feel convicted to do all you can do to stop this deleterious action. I pray God will touch your heart to do the right thing for our community and future generations. Every time you look at these pictures, I want you to remember not only what Harrelson County is, but who it is. "And the nations were angry, and thy wrath has come, and the time of the dead, that they should be judged, and that thou should give reward unto thy servants the prophets, and to the saints, and them that fear thy name, small and great, and should destroy them which destroyed the earth," Revelations eleven eighteen. I just want to say that Harrelson County is full of history and we are by far ordinary people. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Planning Commission Chair and members, thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. My name is Dee Perry and I'm the Executive Director of the Georgia Agricultural Land Trust, but I'm also a Harrelson County citizen and I reside at Two Cambridge Lane in Bremen. Our land trust is the only ag-specific land trust in the state of Georgia and we have preserved over six thousand acres throughout the state. There've been a lot of excellent points stated today regarding opposition to the proposed landfill. I want to specifically address the loss of viable agricultural land. The American Farm Land Trust began an in-depth research project in two thousand sixteen entitled Farms Under Threat: State of the States. The AFT analyzed a snapshot in time covering two thousand one to two thousand sixteen. Phase two of a three-phase study revealed some frightening statistics which were released in May of two thousand nineteen. Eleven million acres of ag land were paved over, built up, and converted to non-ag uses that threaten the future of American agriculture. That equates to two thousand acres a day during that time period. This alarming trend has sped up since two thousand and sixteen. It is vital that ag land loss be slowed down so that America can feed our citizens. Food and shelter, the two most basic needs of human survival, are provided by our agricultural land and must be protected. Another statistic that is particularly frightening for Georgians is that the southeastern United States was shown to be at the highest risk level for continued loss of viable ag land. Georgia herself ranks at the fifth highest in the entire nation. I don't like those statistics. Do you guys? This does not bode well for a state whose number-one economic driver is agriculture. It is worth noting that farm and forest land, while subject to property tax credits in this state, have been proven time and time again through the cost-of-community services studies to be less of a burden on the tax coffers than developed land. In nineteen ninety, the U.S. Forestry Commission created the Forestry Legacy Program to assess and protect the long-term integrity of forest lands after noting their rapid decline due to fragmentation and development nationwide. In two thousand, Governor Barnes petitioned for Georgia to participate in this program. Harrelson County was designated as part of the Mountain Forest Legacy Area. The assessment indicated that the three main threats to this area are fragmentation, development, and water quality. The Georgia State Unified Watershed Assessment indicates that all the watersheds in the Mountain Forestry Legacy Area are impaired and in need of restoration. Loss of forest land creates erosion which in turn impairs the watersheds. The assessment also stated that this is one of the most biologically significant regions in the entire country. While viewing this pristine heavily wooded property where original landfill is proposed, a fact often overlooked is that it doesn't just provide a beautiful scenic vista. Not only do these woodland areas provide habitat for hundreds of species of plants and animals, these trees filter the groundwater that eventually ends up in our homes, as well as filters the impurities in the air we breathe. Removal of these trees and removal of the topsoil required to cover the landfill depletes a natural resource that takes decades to replace, the healthy soils that we need to sustain life. There's another danger this proposed landfill would bring to this area. It's called industrial creep. Simply put, when you build something industrial this large in a rural area along a busy highway far from other sites of its kind, eventually the open land between the large industrial areas begins to fill in. A prime example is Douglas County. Most of us here in this room can remember what Douglas County looked like thirty years ago. A lot has changed. Harrelson County, along with Carroll and Hurd Counties, are the last frontier in West Georgia to stand between the state line and the advancing growth of metro Atlanta. The biggest treasure in West Georgia is the agricultural history and rural lifestyle, a way of life worth preserving. Harrelson County's website declares that she offers residents and visitors quality of life in a rural setting. We all live here because we like it just the way it is. The agricultural history, the quality of the rural lifestyle, and the citizens' desires for the future should be valued above profit. The proposed landfill is a threat to that lifestyle, history, and agricultural land. It's important to acknowledge that waste disposal is a necessary part of municipal planning, no matter how rural. Rather than convert two thousand acres of timberland into an industrial site, wouldn't our energy and focus be better spent towards recycling and responsible waste management for the cities of Harrelson County rather than the needs of citizens and municipalities outside of this county? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We just have a few closing comments. I just want to say that, submit to you that you've heard ample evidence on which to base a recommendation of denial. You've heard of the detrimental impacts this would have to the area and the surrounding properties, to the environment, to attracting desirable businesses, odor, noise, et cetera. Won't take up any more of your time. I have a few more things. The letters that I want to turn in to be added to the administrative record and then I also want to ask all the other citizens that are going to speak. If you've got any written comments, please make sure that you turn them in for the administrative record as well. Thank you again.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to the chairman to call on the individual speakers, I'd just say that both sides have set forth a lot of testimony and evidence. So for the individuals wishing to speak, you'll be allotted five minutes. We do ask that you keep it specific on topics that you have personal knowledge of that have not been brought up thus far. Thank you.
Hopefully I can be heard. I have lists that were presented for you to sign in earlier today. I think I have about twenty names. So I'll offer one final opportunity for you to get on the list if you would care to come up and sign it. And in the meantime, I'll call upon the first individual listed on the list is July Nicholas.
She already spoke, so we'll not mark her off.
Robert W. Darby Jr.
You can come up to this one right here, please.
My name is Robert, my name is Robert W. Darby Jr. I am a, I have lived in Buncombe, Georgia for fourteen years. I can tell you that the quality of life in Buncombe would be destroyed. I can tell you that the well water in Buncombe would be destroyed. I can also tell you that the main reason, despite the fact in this proposal that they claim that coal ash will not be dumped, the main reason is going to be that coal ash will be dumped because Georgia Power lost their contract to be able to put coal ash on their landfill. So the main reason is going to be for coal ash. The main reason is going to be for chemicals and harsh chemicals. And we already, there's already, there's already a small stench in Harrelson, in Buncombe already. And the stench would be even worse. I have other things too that I'd like to read. And I'll, and I'll, and I'll give this to the, to you all to read when I get finished. One is, one is that the land, the landfills affect animals. How they affect animals is that the chemicals would kill them. And not only would it kill the animals, the landfill chemicals would really hurt the plants, animals, and humans. The land, what the problems with landfills is, is that they have, the lining, despite the fact they claim that it doesn't leak, I have seen where it does leak and I've seen, I've seen where it contaminates the groundwater. That's another thing. Another one is that landfills create air pollution. And air pollution is clean air now, but it will be worse if we get this landfill. And the last point is, is that it would also, the landfill will also affect the wildlife and the trees. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Okay, the next individual on the list is Charles Smith. Charles Smith. Are you still here?
He doesn't want to speak.
Okay. How about Nancy Smith? Next person on the list is Nancy Allen. Next person is Fay Beatles. Fay Beatles. Next individual is Darren Johnson. Next individual is Cindy or Robert Coleman.
Thank you for the job you're doing for us. As everybody raised their hand earlier, I didn't see anybody that didn't raise their hand. If you go against your county's residents' wishes and vote this in, I humbly ask you to take in considerations such as, if the things they say can't happen do, like my well water is ruined within the mile radius. If the stench is too bad to be had, I really don't know of any technology that'll take care of that. But make them put money aside to pay for my county water for the rest of my life and the meter that it takes to go in. I moved out here to be in the country. I came from Hiram, which grew up so fast, I didn't want to raise my kids there. I came out here, it was as far as I could get without going to Alabama, and I love it. But I don't want to have to worry about what my grandchildren are drinking when they come to my house. So stipulations like that, I think, need to be put in. They're going to make plenty of money and I don't think it should be a problem for them to put aside a bucket of money to pay for my water for the rest of my life. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual is Booker Herrin. Booker Herrin. I may be mispronouncing that. It's spelled H-E-R-R-I-N-E. How about Thurman Brown? Thurman Brown. Next individual is June Anderson. June Anderson. How about Rosemary York?
I just wanted to say that we moved from Douglas County fifteen years ago because we wanted the rural lifestyle that Douglas County used to have. And Douglas County grew up really fast, very industrialized. And there was a reason we moved to Harrelson County as a family instead of Cobb County. And this is not part of the plan that Harrelson County created back in two thousand seventeen. Personally, as far as our family goes, none of us want to see the county grow up too fast or harm its residents and we feel like this will do that. I love the community that's here. I work here. I live here. I want my children and grandchildren to grow up here. And I would like them to be safe and healthy. And I don't feel like this is something that's going to be safe or healthy for my family or for my neighbors' families. And thank you for what you're doing because I know you don't get paid to sit on this board and make these decisions that impact every one of us. So thank you for taking the time and the consideration to hear us out.
Okay, thank you. The next person listed, Debbie Robinson. Debbie Robinson. Alan Wilburn. Okay. How about Russell Mast, excuse me, N-A-S-T, Russell Nest. The next individual is James Bruton.
He said nothing to ask.
Okay. Did I call earlier Thurman Brown, or did I happen to skip over it?
He called in.
Okay. Just didn't want to leave anybody off. Okay. The next individual is Paula Swan.
Good afternoon. I live at one twenty-two Budapest Road. We have, my husband and I bought property on Budapest because it was rural. It was quiet. It's a, one of the dirt roads that's left in the county. It's a dead end road, and we expected to be able to retire there. We are looking at a landfill within one mile of our home. They say that we're not going to smell it, but we live five, around five miles from the chicken plant in Waco, and we can smell that. We live probably a couple miles from the West Georgia Mud Park. They say we won't hear anything. We hear everything that goes on over there. So to say we were not going to hear it and smell it, I just don't believe that's true. It's not financially, it would be financially irresponsible for us to try to buy a house somewhere else. That would be a thirty-year mortgage at our age, and that's just something that we could This is where we intended to live, to retire. We have a pool. We're looking at not being able to enjoy our pool because of the smell. I don't think that this landfill is what this county needs. We're a good county. I've lived here, I was born and raised here, I've lived here my whole life. I don't want to leave it because of an outside company coming in and destroying what we have here. Thank you.
The next individual is Lynn Clark.
Good afternoon. Um, my name is Lynn Clark. I am a resident of Harrelson County, have been for about forty-five years, and I have a business here. Solid Solutions did a great job, I must say. They spent a lot of money here, they put a lot of money into their presentation, hired lots of professional people to, to explain what they're, they, they believe they're going to be doing in this county. Um, and that makes me very nervous. I'm particularly afraid for the people who live within the mile of the landfill that they say that they will make their homes or their, the sale of their homes whole. Um, this is a very poor county. I don't, I see years and years and years of litigation. This is just the beginning. This is just the beginning, because this is going to continue for years for my children, my grandchildren. This is going to continue for years, just year after year of litigation. So we need to think about that, these poor people who are living within a mile. Uh, I can see appraisals being done for the houses, I can see arguments about that, I can see litigation. So we might as well just decide that that's what we're going to do. Thank you so much for your time. I agree with a lot of the other speakers, I know this is, you do this, you don't do this for money, and I appreciate your time, and good luck.
Next individual is Maria Abercrombie. And the last person on the list is Tommy Patterson.
My name is Tommy Patterson. My family has lived in this county for seven generations, and I have lived in this county all but two years of my life, which I served in the United States Army. I served during wartime to help stand up and defend the rights and freedom of our people. I'm standing today to try to defend the rights and freedom of the people of the Buncombe and Harrelson County community. I have two statements I'd like to read. These are direct quotes from two very reliable sources, and then I'd like to ask the board a question. The first statement comes from the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission's report that they did over a ninety-day period. The item is number seven at the very bottom of the page, it says leachate will be drained from the landfill and stored in wells, then transported off-site for treatment by public wastewater treatment facilities. The second statement is a quote from Webster's Collegiate Dictionary, which defines a well as a hole or pit dug or drilled to find water, brine, oil, or natural gas. My question is, ladies and gentlemen, what happens to our groundwater if they dump this waste into holes on site? That's all I've got to say. I appreciate your kind attention and the opportunity to speak.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That concludes a number of individuals who signed up to speak either for or against the proposal. I would ask those who, uh, uh, either support or presented the proposal, if you have any rebuttal to what you've heard.
Yes, sir. And the rebuttal will be limited to fifteen minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, uh, for this, this opportunity to respond to some of these allegations by the opposition group and others. And please understand that nothing I say in this rebuttal is intended in any way to be disrespectful of any of these people, know they have their opinions. Um, the very last thing, just to cover that very quickly, the DRI report mistakenly referred to wells, and we've clarified this, uh, on the record of our zoning application, the leachate doesn't, is not stored in wells. It is pumped from the bottom of the landfill facility constantly into, uh, steel, uh, storage tanks that are located on an area of the site, that the storage tanks are double-lined, uh, or, or the area where they're stored with concrete, uh, and periodically the leachate is hauled to a wastewater treatment facility where it is treated, uh, by under-authorized wastewater treatment permits. It's not put in the wells, that was simply a typo, a misstatement in that report. The attorney for the opposition group is correct about one thing, and that is that, um, Solid Solutions, and this is true for any applicant for any sort of development, has spent a lot of money, and to develop all of these facts, these reports, the science, and to demonstrate that to you, because we know, and as does any zoning applicant for any sort of development, that, one, that it's facts, that the facts are what count, the facts that relate to the criteria for your decision. The facts are what count. So we have to prove the facts. That's the burden on us to prove facts. When people oppose, uh, a proposed development like this, for whatever their reasons, they may be honest, legitimate reasons, opinions, uh, they can say anything they want to, they can offer opinions, they can offer, uh, innuendo, they can offer newspaper articles, which are not facts and are not evidence, uh, they can offer newspaper articles about other landfills in other states. Those are not facts and they're not evidence about this proposed facility, uh, which is why I emphasized, uh, in closing the first section, that we've got to consider facts, because these days, anybody can say anything about anything. And so I ask you to follow the facts and the science that we've proven to you. Now, there, there are several things, just to respond briefly to the, to the opposition group attorney, who we've met with, but she's not been to the facility or to the site of the proposed facility, so I don't know how she can claim it's a pristine facility. Uh, it's, 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 it's nice land, but it's, it's timberland. Uh, Walker Creek has been ruined by ATVs, and we've reported that to the county a number of times. So we're not talking about any, this is special land, because it's good for this project, and it's special land, uh, because it's located near the interstate, and it's good land for a development like this. And there's, it's not farmland, there's plenty of farmland, there's plenty of timberland in, in the county and elsewhere in Georgia. Uh, this just happens to be a, a very good site, and why it was selected, because of the transportation near I-20, Highway one hundred, the other characteristics of the site that have been discussed. Uh, there are no threatened and dangerous species issues, we studied that, there's no issue there, we heard that mentioned. There's no archaeological sites or significance to the property, uh, that's not accurate. Uh, the, the facts, we're talking about Polk County, the Polk County landfill, and I'm sure a lot of these people understand this, because it's in the neighboring county, it was actually, uh, the subject of a court order, uh, from the court up there, because they were accepting loads and loads and loads of sludge. We've told you in our conditions, our voluntary conditions, we're not going to accept that kind of waste, that's what creates a lot of the odors. Uh, they weren't covering, and this, this isn't a court order, the court, the court found they weren't covering the waste properly, uh, so that's where there were problems with the Polk County landfill. Uh, it's interesting to me, frankly, that, you know, we all generate waste, we're going to generate waste today, it's going to go to Polk County, I guess, and everybody in this room's waste goes to Polk County, and then we hear about how terrible the Polk County landfill is, and yet residents in this county, uh, that are here today, don't want a modern, state-of-the-art, properly operated landfill in the county, which is kind of ironic, uh, to me, that it's okay to send it to Polk, but it's not okay to put it here. The attorney for the opposition referenced the, the, uh, future land use plan. Well, in your ordinance, it says that the land use plan is not zoning, it's just a plan. It's, it's an idea of what might happen in the future with this particular area of the county. It's not a plan, it's not the basis for a zoning decision. Um, it's currently, and has been forever, classified for land, planned purposes as agricultural forestry, but that never, that doesn't mean that it cannot be developed and rezoned for development. If it were, if it did, then very little, if you couldn't change the zoning of property to allow it to be developed for the sort of things we're talking about, you'd never have any development. Uh, and you'll, you can see the city of Tallapoosa has rezoned that whole corridor, uh, immediately adjoining this property, uh, to commercial interstate zoning, and all, the whole area around the, uh, the, the interstate and one hundred intersection there, it's all been, it's an enterprise zone. So, you know, you do change your zoning, when you want, when the county identifies an area that's suitable for development, you change the zoning, and then it changes the, the, the land use plan. So the plan is not a basis to, for a zoning decision. We heard talk about a Bristol, Tennessee, uh, landfill situation, well, I'm going to call Michael Stubbs, because he's familiar with that, uh, particular situation, and it's just an example of how you can pull a newspaper article from, from anywhere, I mean, from Alabama, from Tennessee, newspaper article isn't facts, we all know that, we read articles, you get information, but it's, that, that's not necessarily based on accurate facts, and the articles that you've heard about are not.
So thank you for the chance to address you again. Really quick, that Bristol facility that one of the previous speakers spoke about, I've actually seen that landfill, of the hundreds of landfills I've been in, I've been in that one, uh, as recently as under two years ago, I was asked to do an assessment of it. That facility is a lot different than the one that you're reviewing today, and here's why. That facility is a quarry filled landfill, it was an old quarry, literally with straight sides, couple hundred feet deep, if not deeper, and they permitted a landfill in the bottom of it, below groundwater, which ours is not, straight sides in a quarry. So you're hundreds of feet below the ground, they're pumping groundwater to keep a cone of depression. They also can't close anything, because if you imagine a big straight hole and they're filling it up, nothing is closed, and when I was there, the gas system is woefully inadequate, uh, was not working that day, that, that landfill had a very strong odor, uh, I was in the hole, right in there with it, and because of that, that's a lot different than the facility proposed in front of you today, and a lot of the things that we designed is for that very purpose. Thank you again for the time.
And, and, and of course, people are going to be opposed to, to a landfill, uh, they don't know the science, they don't know all the facts, uh, they have opinions, uh, good faith opinions, uh, because they don't have the information, um, you know, they, what we've heard today are, are a lot of opinions, uh, including people who write letters to be read today, their, their opinions, uh, their emotional reactions to what terrible a landfill, you're kidding. Uh, there's a lot of emotional reactions to landfills, but they're emotional reactions, they're personal opinions, and they're based on things people have heard, uh, hearsay and innuendo and other things people have heard about landfills. Uh, you, that's why we emphasize, you got to base your decision, we ask you, I agree with Mr. Hillburn, I think it was, that you need to base your decision on evidence, but it needs to be factual evidence. Uh, emotional responses, newspaper articles are not the sort of evidence that the criteria that you're going to apply contemplate your decision being based on, that they're facts. And we have that burden, and we've satisfied that burden, I submit, of proving the facts and the science. They're not going to be noise impacts, they're not going to be odors, impacts, uh, they're not going to be impacts to land values. Uh, could you put up the, the last, uh, Hugh Bass?
And I think this, this goes a long way to, to illustrate that. This is the Richland Creek landfill Mr. Bass talked about, uh, and it was there for years and years, uh, in operation, uh, and this is, it doesn't cover two thousand acres.
Take your, take your mic with you, please.
It does not, I'm sorry. It does not cover two thousand acres, it's probably five, four to five hundred acres. Uh, and you can see over the years how development has occurred, residential schools, commercial development, all around this facility. If people, if, if these facilities were a true, truly a concern to quality of life or land values or other, uh, incompatibility type of issues, you wouldn't see things like this. Landfills are not the terrible things that people believe they are. Uh, and I think we've shown that, we've shown it by science, we've shown it by facts, and everything that the opposition has expressed is opinion and emotion and non-factual. You haven't heard a single fact about how this is noise from this is going to impact anybody. You haven't heard a single fact about how land property values will be impacted. You've heard allegations, but you hadn't heard any facts, and that's why I keep emphasizing, please base your decision or your recommendation on facts that you've heard and presented in these materials, and not emotional reactions and things that really are not, uh, reliable type of evidence. Uh, let me see if there's, hang on. Uh, one other thing, recycling, it was suggested there won't be any recycling, we don't need to put waste in a landfill, we can recycle it all. That's not true at all. There's very little market these days for recyclables, except for those things like cardboard, which were pulled from the waste, typically pulled out of the waste before it ever gets taken to a landfill for disposal. The vast majority of waste we all generate, household waste. The vast majority of waste we all generate, household waste, commercial, at our businesses, has to go into a landfill. That's the best we've got. And EPA, when they said landfills will leak, that was in the early 90s when they were developing the subtitle deregulation that Mr. Stubbs talked about. When they were requiring all of this science, all of this engineering for landfills, including just a household waste landfill like we're talking about. Liner systems, leachate collection systems, monitoring systems, liners, caps, everything Mr. Stubbs talked about is what they developed back then. And it is proven methodology. It is proven to be the safest, most environmentally secure way of disposing of all of our waste. And that's what this landfill is and that's what it'll be. And we've shown that in all of our facts and I hope you will base your decision on the facts. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else, is there anyone else now that needs to speak?
No, there are no questions. This is just a 15-minute rebuttal time. If Ms. Brass has any rebuttal, she may speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Jack Williams. I've lived in Harrelson County 86 years. I'm concerned about this landfill. I worked at a rubber plant here in Tallapoosa for 47 years. And you can't tell me that those landfill liners won't leak. I know because we've made some of them. Thank you, have a good day.
Again, my name is Johnny Wright with the Harrelson County Alliance. The only thing I wanted to say in regard to the attorney's statement is, no matter, you know, they, they claim, and even if it's true, they claim to build the best, some of the best and most safe landfills in the history of the world. And even if that's the case, I just want to say, I think it's clear to you, the sentiment of the county is we don't want this. Whether it's emotional or fact-based or whatever, the county, based on my perception, and I, and I think you see the entrant, the, the sentiment of the folks here today do not want this landfill. We don't care if it's the best in the history of the world. Harrelson County does not want a regional mega landfill in this, in, in our county. We don't, we don't feel this region needs it, has been spoken of today by, based on information from the EPD's website. So, I would just like to leave it at that. The citizens of this county, in my opinion, do not want this regional mega landfill.
I ask you again to please do not applause, thank you.
We've, we've heard a good bit of information presented by the applicant and those opposing the application. And from you who has sat here for hours waiting on an opportunity to be heard. I guess now it comes time to go to the members of the board.
Can we ask a question?
Yes, sir.
The citizens do not get a chance to ask any questions, I'm sorry.
I didn't get a chance to sign the paper. Could I ask a question?
I'm sorry, the citizens don't get a chance to ask any questions. But there'll be another hearing opportunity where you can speak before the Board of Commissioners.
We'd be happy to answer your questions.
Okay. What I would ask is the members of the commission, do you have any questions that you care to ask at this time?
Yes, I'm Alan Williams, which now I've grown up here in Harrelson County also. Seventy-two years near, so. Except for two years I was in the military also, Mr. Patterson. And I'm sure Harrelson County wants to do what's right for the county. And we want to try our best to do what's right for Harrelson County, from our hearts. I would like to make a statement. When I was a kid, I had a smell. I lived on an old dirt road and had a smell, didn't know what it was. And come to find out, it wasn't landfill, it was a paper mill in Rome, Georgia. And I'm sure y'all, a lot of y'all, older, that. Now, see, first thing I wrote down here is future. What is the future of Harrelson County? Hopefully it's to be good, good citizens, good people that love the Lord and love one another. That's scriptures. Times are coming when we won't be, I've seen it where we're getting less and less rule. I'm thinking of our kids also, as mentioned, our grandkids, what's going to be effect on them. And the decisions we make today, excuse, the decisions we make today is going to affect them. It'll affect us today probably if the Lord allows us to live. I've heard the facts that the scientists have. But if we go by facts that's unseen, now we've heard at other landfills, but this is a landfill that would be in Harrelson County. Could be different. Appreciate all the guys that done that, the work, hard work to get all of this, you see what we have to go through. And I'm thankful for them coming and explaining some things that I didn't understand. But it remains facts, science's facts, we know today, but what about tomorrow? What's the facts going to be tomorrow? What's the facts, true facts are when the landfill is there and it's operating. That's when we'll have the sound effects. They said it would be a low nuisance of sound. What is a low nuisance of sound to individuals that's different? Low nuisance of smell? What's the low nuisance of smell to each individual? I don't believe I'd like to smell it myself. And there's going to be, my understanding of whether there's going to be a smell, it says in here in their books, and they're trying to get rid of all of it. And I appreciate that. But there's still going to be a smell, even with the gas burning, the gas that comes out of the landfill, they're going to be burning that. What's that, I don't know what that's going to smell like. I've never been around a mill, landfill, but I've been by some. And this one is like a brother said, that it might be a perfect landfill. But I know that man, anything man does, it's going to crumble. One day or another, it's going to crumble, it's going, man is just, we make mistakes, no. I do. So, if there is a leak, I'd like to know how they would keep it, if it did get into our water system. There's nothing you can do about that, I wouldn't think. If it goes through Walker's Creek, it's pretty close, my understanding, to the landfill. If it does get in there, it goes from there through Tallapoosa, through, to Alabama, to the Tallapoosa River, then to Alabama. So, if it does, we got to take that into consideration, the effects it's going to have, not only in us, but Alabama. Now, they, they give us a site here back when this first started, about a 45-mile radius within the landfill. I don't know why, but I believe about two-thirds of that radius is in Georgia, to three-fourths, and other parts in Alabama, as far as radius. And I know, know, a lot of folks know that that laws can be changed. And I have a question for our lawyer, Avery. Can EPA or EPD or Atlanta or Georgia law, can they come in? Even if we're not taking coal ash or other materials, can they come in and decide, hey, this landfill's not full yet, can we distribute coal ash into these, this landfill for other materials? Can they change it?
I'm not sure what the EPD or the EPA can or couldn't do in this situation.
Okay, thanks, Avery. But I know laws can be changed. We see where Atlanta area is coming down this way. And just one instant, there's several others, but we can't burn, have a, a burn except so many feet wide all. And that's coming down from Atlanta, that's not coming from Harrelson County. Burn permit, except for different seasons, of course. On the water. I can go back years and y'all can also. I can remember we had plenty of water back 50s, 60s, 70s. We've had droughts where we had no water. I can remember just a few years ago where they had to even take the Beaver Downs out of Tallapoosa River so we could get some water in. Plus, we had to have water pumped in from Alabama into Tallapoosa. So, my, water is very, very important to us and to me, to Harrelson County. I've heard that statement several times. So, what if it is? What if it does get a leakage and it seeps into our water system? That's it, there's nothing we can do. That's it, to me. The people, talking about science. Seasons change. They say our environment changes, storms are getting more regular. And we're not in control. We know who is in control of these things. So, how can we say that a flood won't come down to that area? We can't, no one can, I don't think. Facts, again, these are scientific facts that they have given us. Again, I appreciate the, the work that they've done, strenuous hours, I'm sure. But the facts are not until the, to me, for this area, for Harrelson County, is the facts will be on sound, odor, sat will be when it's built, of being a process of building. So, those to me aren't facts until that's done. Because our, things change every day. I have not seen a garbage truck that didn't leak. And there's going to be many going in and out of the landfill. The smell's got to be coming from there. And on this smell and on the noise, on these pictures that they took, and if I ain't mistaken, it was several different areas, all the leaves were on the trees. Now, I'm just coming, coming thinking guy. If all the, and I know there were some evergreen, pines, pote wood. But I've looked on those pictures that they gave us and they, I saw hardwood and I saw bushes where the leaves were still on. So, to me, it's not accurate, to me personally, visual. It's not accurate sound, because we know you take a bunch of hardwoods out there and have leaves on them back behind, say, 50 yards. You're not going to hear as much as you would if they didn't have the leaves on them. That's just me. So, I don't go by these sound evaluations they've made or the sat. The same thing is to me, the sat and the noise. There's going to be noise, there's going to be a smell. Why Harrelson County? I saw here, again, on that radius, 45 miles, I know there's at least three or four power companies within that radius. Now, they have been landfills that didn't take coal ash. But I know of two of those power companies are ready to get coal ash out from their business. So, I see where in the radius of 45-mile radius that part of Alabama was in there. Again, this is me. Laws can be changed. Now, we're going to get enough from the 45-mile radius from Atlanta of garbage, trash, so anyway, I don't know how to put it. That's going to be a bunch. And I personally will deal with our own trash. Well, why can't they deal with theirs? And why not find a place, and I understood that they did, I'm sure they looked at around all area, hopefully all areas. And why not, if it's the money thing, why not find a place where it's convenient for the whole 45-mile radius instead of just maybe three-fourths, two-thirds or three-fourths? You know, we are a poor county. But to me, we have more than a lot of counties don't. I read in here also where... I read in here also, where someone said that bigger is better. Well, can I say, coming into my home county, and seeing a three-hundred... Coming from Atlanta, and see a, you can see it in certain areas. Three, a landfill that's four-hundred, fourteen-hundred-and-two feet high, and, I don't know what the width of the top that is, would be. But two, there weren't a variance on the buffers, this, and they can correct me if I misunderstand this, they weren't, uh... Two or three-hundred-foot width on a, on a buffer, and we, our buffer strips has to be at least five-hundred, and we cannot, we do not have the authority to change our buffers. A fifty-foot high. We do not have the authority to change our ordinances. So... That's all I'm saying, until the vote, unless there's some... Thank you.
Anything else?
Good afternoon. One thing I would just mainly focus on, is when they said facts. What is a fact? I, I would like to have seen more facts given on the traffic that's gonna take place, on noise, on smell. Because I, I saw and heard facts, construction, height, all these things, but just kinda skipped over producing facts of those three things. I would like to have saw more and heard, and been presented of those three.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Jeff Devery, I do have a couple of questions, and I don't know, Avery, who to direct these to, a lot of these questions are for some of the constituents of the landfill. Excuse me.
We can direct them to Mr. Norman, and he can let us know who would be best to answer those questions.
Okay. My first question involves line of sight. I think it's tab H in your binder. There were five examples given of properties that had visibility. A couple of those images showed a red dot on them, simulating the fourteen-hundred-and-two feet. It has also mentioned that there was an elevation, excuse me, of ten-forty, uh, let's see, let me get my notes here, give me a second. Elevations mentioned, twelve-hundred, twelve-seventy, and thirteen-twenty. I was wanting to ask, on the line of sight, if I clearly understand what that means. So, for the purpose of illustration, I don't know who I'm addressing it to, but I would like for them to be able to see what I'm explaining.
Would somebody like to come up and address these questions? And if you need somebody else, they can call on them.
Okay, Mr. Strickland.
So, if I'm sitting in this chair, and we say line of sight, and I'm looking over this TV, basically, that light is in my line of sight. Is that correct?
Yes.
But if I look below this, in my field of view, everything that I see back here behind me was not incorporated into the line of sight study, is that correct?
No.
Could you go up to the microphone, just so everybody can...
Sure. Oh, sorry.
So, the line of sight study was done to make sure that there was no line of sight from a vantage point, so that it would be below and, and above.
So, when the line of sight diagrams were done, they incorporated the treetops and a line that went over those. But there was no view given to the, in between the tree trunks, if you will, that would be visible.
Well, there's enough of a buffer there to prevent line of sight.
So, it won't be visible at all. So, my question is, on the diagrams that were given, why did they not do a 3D modeling and rendering of what the landfill would actually look like in those pictures? Versus just a single red dot that was a weather balloon, of what diameter?
Right. Well, we did, we did the only study that frankly was available for us to do, which I discussed, so...
So, you, you couldn't generate images of that, but we can get a 3D model printed, but we couldn't generate on a drawing, this is what the landfill will look like in the picture?
I think that the three, I think the line of sight goes in enough detail where it shows that there was not gonna be a line of sight. Is there a particular place that you're questioning whether or not it's, it's accurate?
Yes, sir. And for clarification, too, twelve-four, excuse me, 301 Daniel Road, which was the first one mentioned, had a twelve-hundred-and-forty-feet elevation. Is that from road grade? Is that from some instrument, six feet above, ten feet above?
That's the elevation of the line of sight?
So, elevation of the line of sight, or the point on the ground? I'm trying to establish, what is twelve-hundred-and-forty feet? The point on the ground, or some distance above the ground?
I don't, I don't, I don't think I can answer that question, I don't have the report.
The reason I'm asking is because I went to 301 Daniel, and looked at it from the road, and you can definitely see more than what's in the picture. The grade went up about, I'm gonna say fifteen feet, just give or take. And if you went to that fifteen feet, it would definitely change your line of sight. So, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand the documents, what was presented, and just simply asking a question, that the line of sight does not include field of view, or either what would be called a view shed? Is that correct?
It includes the field of view on most of those lines of sight. I think I know what you're talking about, and so you're trying to say that it would be visible from the Daniel Lo, Road location, from locations that were lower than that elevation?
From many locations that are here, and many locations that were not in the book, and I have some other addresses of, of properties I went to, that I feel it would be visible from.
What locations are those?
So, you got 174 and 210 Shallow Church Road. You also have the outpost, which was in your, excuse me, the overlook, which was mentioned in your document, which is not the highest point out in that community. If you go up to the outpost, it's higher, and if you go up a little bit, the other way, there's a house that's higher. So, again, I'm just asking about line of sight, because I don't feel that it properly represents what the field of view will be, or for a technical term, the view shed will be.
Is it, do you feel like the statements that I made about it not being visible in the city of Talposus, city of Waco, any areas north on 100, Highway 78, or headed westbound on, or eastbound on Interstate 20? Do you feel like those statements aren't accurate?
I feel like there are certain parts of the statement that aren't accurate, and I'll give you an example. You didn't mention other points of view coming from Alabama, where I'm able to see plantation pipeline, as you come down some of those points, and I'm certain you'll be able to see this, in my opinion, nothing to base that off on fact. But the facts are, that in the line of sight drawing, there were pictures done on the side of the road, and a tree was right here, and it looked up beyond that tree. But there was no account given in the images for how it would look at this level. So, I'm just trying to understand, do I understand those documents correctly?
I, I stand behind the, the results in the line of sight study, and I certainly stand behind the statements I made earlier about city of Talposus, city of Waco, and those other vantage points.
And, and the statement that it's not possible to create a rendering in any of those images that would give you a full dimensional view of it, versus just a red dot on a picture?
I'm not a professional engineer, I don't do this for a living, so, yeah.
Thank you, that's one of my questions. Also, that what Alan was just asking about, I wanna get a little more clarification. He mentioned the coal ash, and I have this that came in the mail, I think you're probably familiar with it, where it states in here, and I want, I want to stick with the facts. Let me get to it real quick, and I will, here we go. "They will bring in hazardous waste to the landfill." I'm trying to look for the other one, because I know there's another one here that I want to point out as well. They will put, the number one statement, "They will put coal ash in the landfill and poison our land." That was the fiction.
Right.
The fact statement was, "The zoning application that has been submitted specifically states that the proposed solid waste disposal facility will not, as a condition of the zoning approval, accept coal ash in the facility. Furthermore, any proposed host agreement before the Harlson County Board of Commissioners will exclude coal ash as an acceptable waste." And I've heard in here multiple times today, that we wouldn't accept it, that it wouldn't be allowed. But on your site, your own video, Mr. Ernest Coughlin stated in there, that he wishes he could commit that it would never happen, but he could not commit to that. Which statement is correct?
The statement about it never accepting coal ash, the statement we make on that, the statement that's in the proposed zoning conditions.
So, the video that he prepared is incorrect?
I, I'd have to look at that.
It is on your site, he specifically says that he wishes he could never have coal ash in there, but he could not, I'm just asking, is that accurate or not?
Well, I think that statement's taken out of context, because we've been, we've been very clear from the beginning, that we will never accept coal ash in this landfill. So, that's clear, it's a condition of the zoning, we put it in all the zoning documents. There's, there's simply, that's just simply a fact statement, that's not gonna happen.
So, I wanna get a clarification on that, if I could. Rule 391-3-4-02, 3B, 20, page 10, tab I, and appendix II. Does this mean CCR can be forced on the landfill in an emergency from a CCR site or generator? Those are rules from your documentation prepared here. So, I don't know who the proper person is to ask, but again, I'm trying to get clarity. We say never, but then the rules say minor and major changes can be made, and what's required to make that change?
Bob, do you wanna address? I, I can assure the planning commission that accepting coal ash is not a part of our business plan whatsoever. We've been very clear from the beginning, that we are not gonna accept coal ash, and I can't be any more clear on that. It is, we are not gonna accept coal ash in this facility. And so, I'd like for Bob to address the legal language, but that, that's been a, a clear statement from day one, from our organization.
Yeah, that, that has been a condition, as of the other conditions, no out-of-state waste, no sludge, et cetera, since day one, and there will be, those will be conditions to any zoning approval granted by the county. There'll also be covered in, if there's a host agreement, it'll be covered in there. The state, whatever that rule says, the state cannot require a landfill that is subject to a condition that can't take that type of waste, and, and/or a contract that they can't take that kind of waste. There's no way the state could force that landfill to take coal ash. And there are plenty of, there are plenty of landfills in the state that will take coal ash, and by the time this landfill were permitted, if zoning approval were granted, by the time this point is permitted by the state, most of that coal ash has gonna been disposed of anyway. In landfills that EPD allows to accept it, that have not agreed as a condition of zoning or a contract, that they will not take it, like we are agreeing to do.
So, I understand the host agreement clearly states that y'all will not accept it. My question is, can it ever be changed to allow coal ash to come into this facility at any point, in any way, under any rule, by any governing body? Because, I've been told before, the government can't take land and do this and do that, but we see how that all worked out. So, I just wanna know for a fact, you're saying it's not in the host. I agree with you, I'm not arguing that, I've read the manual, it's there, it's clear, it's plain. My question revolves around the ability to change it, and can it be changed?
If the citizens elected officials, county commissioners, who are willing to remove the zoning condition, and if the operator of the landfill were willing for them to remove the zoning condition, then they could remove the zoning condition, and they could amend the contract.
So, it would require the commissioners willingly doing it, not, they can't be forced, or in a legal court, or taken somewhere to say, well, you've got this whole landfill here, there's no other place in the state to take it, we have to take it somewhere, and we're going to require you to take it. Are you saying that's not possible?
That's not possible. We, we can't, we can't force the commissioners to do that. We've agreed voluntarily to that being a condition of zoning, we've agreed to it in a contract. We can't force the commissioners to do anything. Future commissioners, if they wanted to, could amend the agreement, could amend, and we may not want to do that. We don't want coal ash, we, we're not trying to take coal ash, we don't need coal ash. The coal ash is all gonna be disposed of by the time this landfill commences operation. So, there's, there's no, there will be no temptation for any future commission to do, do the kind of thing you're talking about, or for us to wanna do it.
Okay, thank you, I just wanna be sure I'm clear on that. So, if they can't require the commissioners to take it, as we've established, what about the requirement for the commissioners to take a landfill if they don't want it? Can that be required of them? Because if it can, and again, I'm, I'm not up here to argue and make a bunch of technical stuff, but if the commissioner say no, and then we still get a landfill, however this turns out, what would make me believe that the commissioners could say no to coal ash and still not get it?
I'm not following your question exactly.
So, my question is, if the commissioners of this county vote to deny their request for the landfill, is that the end of it?
It could be appealed to a court, that's the legal procedure.
Thank you. So, now, to follow that question, if the commissioner said, "We do not want coal ash in our landfill if we have it here," is that the end of it? Or could it get appealed, or the state government, or whoever?
If, if, we've agreed as a voluntary condition of our zoning application, if, if the commissioners were to deny it and went to court, the court would review it on the record of our zoning application. The condition that we won't take coal ash is still in there, the court can't change what we applied for. The court couldn't do that, a court could not make the county, or agree to accept coal ash as part of an appeal of an adverse zoning decision.
Okay. Thank you. I, I do have other questions, I don't know if you'll be the one to answer it or not, but I have another question for you.
I have a question.
Yes.
If the landfill is sold to someone else, does that break the contract with solid waste?
It does not. The zoning condition would be just as binding, and the contract would be just as binding on anybody who might operate this landfill. Legally binding, for the duration of the life of the landfill.
Who takes care of it after? After the thirty, or when it's closed? Thirty years, thirty-five years, whatever? Who, who takes care of the landfill?
No, the, the owner-operator's still responsible for the landfill, and if the EPD, under the rules, if the Georgia EPD determines that the landfill continues to need post-closure care, we call it, that's monitoring, checking the cap, fixing whatever they might need fixing. The EPD can require that to continue for as long as they think it needs to continue.
What about expanding the landfill?
Well, we, we can't, the EPD can approve, and they approve expansions of landfills, you know, fairly often. They could approve an expansion, but it can't be approved beyond that three-hundred acre absolute maximum that we've agreed to, again, as a zoning condition, and would in the host agreement, if there's a host agreement.
So, they can expand it over the three-hundred acres?
We cannot expand it, and Mr. Strickland explained that, not, not only legally, because it's a condition of zoning, but there's nowhere to go. We can't, because of the natural features on the property, we couldn't expand beyond three-hundred acres, and nobody could, ever, because of the, the natural features that would prevent that.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, sir, I still have some more questions. So, what is the difference between background and baseline values regards to groundwater?
Background, the groundwater monitoring that's required to be done, they have to take a, a up gradient sample, that's the background. And then they take a ground date, another sample down, or samples, multiple samples... ground date, another sample down, or samples, multiple samples, down gradient of the landfill. They compare, uh, the results of the sampling down gradient of the landfill with the background up gradient of the landfill that's not impacted or influenced at all by anything from the landfill.
Okay. Thank you. Um. Could sewage or sludge ran through a dewatering press be received at the landfill?
We're not taking any sewage sludge, or, uh, either municipal sewage sludge or industrial sewage sludge. Uh, you, you can't take any types of liquid waste. Uh, we're just not taking sludge, period.
Yes, sir. That wasn't my question. My question was, could sewage or sludge ran through a dewatering press be accepted at the landfill?
Well, we, we've agreeing as a condition, we're not gonna take any municipal sludge, and that would be dewatered or otherwise.
Okay. That, that's what I was looking for, because it's technically not sewage sludge if it's in a dry form. Correct?
Well, you're correct.
So I'm just being sure that we're not receiving any sewer sediment remains run through a press, all that kind of stuff. So there's a couple of things about the map that I have questions about. Um, how deep will the lobes of the landfill be? There's an east and a west lobe, right?
Right.
How, how deep will those be?
That's really an engineering question. Uh, Michael would have to answer that to be accurate.
The question was how far below grade, how deep below grade?
Yes.
It'll, it'll be based on two things, depth of groundwater, depth of bedrock. It'll vary, but for the most part, I'm going straight on memory here. I don't remember seeing anything deeper than about maybe thirty or forty feet, with most of it maybe about twenty feet or so below grade, and some of it's gonna be shallower than that. But I'm, I'm in that, I'm in that range of, of zero to say forty feet, something like that.
Okay. Uh, and while you're here, I've probably another question for you. I'm sorry. So the landfill liners, what are the square dimensions of a solid piece of the liner? Because there had to be a lot of welds made and that kind of stuff, and we're talking about three hundred acres of liner.
So, so the actual membrane, the actual-
Well, not the six, yeah, the, whatever the coverage is, it has to be welded together. How big is that sheet as a single piece when it comes?
So, I'll, I'll be close, but, um, the, the HCP membrane, I believe, is made in about twenty-two foot wide. That's about the, the width of a roll. I think they're about six hundred and sixty feet long. So when you weld them together, what they actually do is, is actually a picture, well, this is an extrusion well, but they actually lap the two liners together, and they have a, uh, what we call a double fusion machine that melts the plastic together on two ends, and it creates a little air channel. And we test that air channel to make sure the weld is strong. So twenty-two feet wide, by six hundred and sixty feet long, and then you're gonna be overlapping, um, I, I can't do the math in my head how many square feet that is before you lap, but-
That's a good rough number. So how many linear feet of weld are in a open cell? There's ten acres, ten to fifteen opened at a time?
Oh.
So how many rough linear feet of weld? I mean, it's, it's a lot, right? I mean, we're talking a lot of welds in a liner.
Well, let's see, six hundred, I mean, I would guess, I won't guess, I can get a number roughly, but it'll, it'll depend on the cell, obviously. But, you know, it'll be, it'll be thousands of feet of weld, because when you overlap, I mean, six hundred and fifty feet every time you overlap a panel, something like that.
So for the cell, just so I understand that too, you're, you're saying it's gonna be twenty or thirty feet deep. Is it dug in a bowl for a single section, and another section's open? Or is it dug and the liners laid and left for the next expansion? And, and the liners, do you get what I'm asking? There's a ten acre lobe, right?
Yes, sir.
Is it just built in a ten acre bowl? Or is it ten acres and some extension of the liner out beyond that, and then it's connected on to with the next ten acres? Or is it this group of holes over and over again, ten acres span? I hope I'm asking that right.
Let's see if I have to give it a shot. So this facility more or less has a, a spine down the middle, and so the landfill cells, the high ends will go to that spine. Each landfill cell is roughly, say, ten to fifteen acres, and each individual landfill cell is, is treated kind of as its own containment unit. That unique ten or fifteen acres drains to one collection point, we call a sump, and that sump has dual redundant pipes in it, redundant pumps that constantly remove the liquid. So if cell one pump was pulled out to, you know, to say service it, you could have a backup in there, but it wouldn't affect cell two at all. They're, they're individual containment units, although they are always connected in between. It goes up and they connect, then you go down to cell two. Is that, did I-
I, I think I got the answer there. It's basically ten acre pockets of, with some, something in between it, that some kind of ground cover to make a bowl?
It'll be a berm. It'll be a constructed berm. It'll, it'll, um, I wish I could give an example. Um, you know, it's, it's a gradually graded area collecting to one sump where the sides higher than the middle, and the middle goes to that sump. And the sump is always on the outside, always-
For ten or fifteen acres or so?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, again, I, I hate to keep you up here, but while you're here, I got another question. So on the, um, landfill here, as it begins to build, I think we were given three elevations that the land balloons were. I just quoted them a while ago. But what's the acreage at those different elevations?
I can certainly get it for you. I'm, I'm going on memory T. The first elevation was maybe the first six or seven cells, and I, I'll have to look that up. I, I know it. I just don't know it right off the top of my head. My guess, and I say my guess, my assumption is, we probably went maybe halfway through the, the western lobe, then all the way through the western lobe, and, you know, phase one, two, and three would be, that's pretty logical what I think we would have done.
The, the reason I'm asking for that is, again, the line of sight drawing is, is not very clear. I mean, it's a single dot in space out there, and this is not a single dot in space. So I'm, I'm just trying to get a relative size of land that it would be, since it's sitting on three hundred acres, but I don't know what it is as it goes up.
I, we can certainly get it. It's just a matter of digging in the application and going and pulling the acreage.
Any idea what the acreage at Tally Mountain is, just for reference?
The actual acreage of the mountain?
Just, just kind of that area, just to, I, I estimated it about a hundred and fifty acres when I did the scale.
I really wouldn't know. I mean, eyeballing it, I would say you're in the ballpark.
Okay. I was just trying to get a point of reference. Uh, let me see if I got any more questions. I'm sorry for you. What, what's the cost to maintain this, like, over, do y'all have any landfills first that are closed? That's my first question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We've got some that are closed.
And then in those that are closed, is there like a cost per sale to maintain it, or a cost for the facility? How do y'all break that down in maintenance costs? Because somebody's got to keep this cost going beyond the thirty years. What is that figure we're looking at from a maintenance cost of upkeep, all these pumping systems and tanks and sensors and gauges and all those stuff?
So, really good question. So annually, a third-party engineer for any landfill is supposed to calculate the closure, and what you're asking is the post-closure maintenance cost. We provide that to the client, and the client uses that for post-closure planning. Um, in addition, you're also reporting that cost to the state, and the state makes sure part of the financial assurance mechanism is for that post-closure cost. You know, they vary depending, you know, all sites are a little bit unique in the way they're, the, um, the way they're built. But, you know, something on the order for groundwater detection and maintenance of the cap and something like that, you might see something on the order of maybe fifteen hundred to, um, maybe three thousand dollars an acre a year. So if, if we had a, just so I can, you know, so I could do the math real quick, if we had a two hundred acre footprint and a two thousand dollar per acre per year, the applicant, let's say the applicant, the landfill operator is setting that money aside for, for thirty years. So it, it's a big number.
Which is four hundred thousand, right, if I did the math right, for two hundred acres?
Per year, and that will cover, you know, collecting leachate and maintaining the grass, mowing, putting fertilizer, all the inspections, all that stuff.
And, and that's the county, county's responsibility, or whose responsibility after the thirty years? Whose responsibility is it for that? In this case, I'm gonna call it five hundred thousand, since it's three hundred acres, I'll just call it five hundred. Whose responsibility is that for the five hundred thousand per year afterwards?
So it'll, it'll still be the, the applicant or the landowner, which I would, I mean, is gonna be the, the, um, landfill operator, right? I mean, so they're gonna continue to maintain that, uh, for, the state just requires a minimum of thirty years. They're still, they just, they can't hold their hands up and, and walk away. So when you get to the end of that period, um, you'll have to assess whether or not that post-closure maintenance should continue in the same capacity, reduced capacity, or if the, if the waste mound is stable, and there's, there's not, there's very little maintenance to go. But that bridge, to, to my knowledge, we don't have one that's exited thirty years of post-closure yet.
And, and at the end of that, because there has to be some projection, right, at the end of that thirty years, how, how does the operator generate any funds to cover the five hundred thousand dollars of cost? All right, let's just call it two hundred and fifty thousand. I mean, we'll call it a, a smaller number. How is that cost generated post-thirty years to cover that expense of maintenance and ongoing fees when they're not taking in any more tipping, tipping fees, I think it's called, host fees, maybe?
Well, so lots of these facilities, you know, may beneficial gas to reuse system, there's revenues associated with that. Um, that's really the main one I would look at long-term, you know, past thirty years. A lot, several of these facilities, some of your, your bigger solid waste companies, you know, they have a series of landfills, and they're all kind of grouped as to one, in one big asset. In a case like that, the applicant would just have to make sure they've got enough money in the bank account to make sure that it continues past, um, post-closure, if the need arises to continue past that, that threshold of thirty minimum years.
So it, it would be the owner's responsibility to upkeep that, and at any point, if they said, we're not upkeeping that anymore, then what?
Bob, that's probably illegal.
The state has a solid waste trust fund that they put money in from all sorts of sources, and that is used, if an operator were to abandon the landfill, uh, they use that and, and doesn't have the sufficient financial assurance mechanism in place to cover all of the closure and post-closure of that abandoned landfill. The state has this fund. They would go in and do that.
Do, do you have any numbers, or does anyone have any numbers on how many landfills are abandoned?
I, I only know-
That rely on the state to bail them out, basically?
I, I think that all, I know of three, but they're all old landfills for which the operator was not required to put up sufficient financial assurance, so the state had to step in.
Okay.
These are all, all, all landfills, uh, not, not modern, uh, MSW landfills like we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I do have some other questions, but I, I want to be respectful of time. Maybe you, you tell me at any time if I took enough time.
Yeah, we're getting pretty close.
Okay.
Mr. Commissioner, may I, uh, relate it to your question about the wells? This is addressed to you, if you don't mind?
Yes.
Can Michael explain to you the quality control assurance for the wells? You asked about all the wells. But if you're not, don't want to hear it.
No, sir. I was mainly just asking about the upkeep and maintenance of those. That was, that was my question. I'm sure there's EPA requirements of water quality and those kind of things.
Okay, thank you.
Um, one question I do have, and maybe it's for you still, I'm sorry. We have a map here of the elevation change for the landfill, but what about the borrow areas? Because I don't notice any trees removed out of the other, I'm gonna call it twenty-four hundred acres, I think, right? This is, oh, excuse me, this is two thousand acres, so of the other sixteen hundred acres. I don't see any trees removed from where soil borrow will happen.
So, um, and I am going on memory here. I believe the soil borrow areas total, T, I'm looking at you, was it something around five or six hundred acres or so?
I think that's close.
Am I close?
It's here on the mountain.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm in the ballpark. So the, the, so you're correct. They're not shown in this three D model. They'll be developed one at the time, um, because, and I, I should have mentioned this earlier, that's my fault. Um, you're actually, when you have a surface mining permit, not only are you, it specifies the way you operate the, the surface mine, but you've got to have a bond for that too, to reclaim it. And so it's a, a financial disincentive to open up a whole bunch of barriers, because you've got to bond it with the state for reclamation. So they'll be developed one at the time as the need arises for landfill cell construction, those liner materials, uh, that we discussed earlier in the operation. When they're closed, they're gonna be closed in the reclamation manner, probably most likely will be returned either to a forested area or an exposed, um, I'll say, kind of a, this is a graphite schist type area, a, a rock area. What the barriers are really gonna look like, it's not gonna be a hole in the earth, because they're largely just gonna be a subdued topographic, um, feature of what's there. So if you have a slope like this, when the barrier's done, it's gonna be maybe ten to twenty feet, and it's really just pushed down to where you get, to where you can reclaim it with a small sediment pond at the bottom, that once reclamation happens, trees are returned or is returned to a stable environment. You essentially decommission the sediment pond.
But, but there'll be an elevation change, right?
Yes, sir.
What's the rough elevation change estimate?
Um, roughly twenty feet. There might be some, that we found some, you know, good soils at thirty feet, but if I average it out, we're probably in that twenty to twenty-five foot range, just a subdued, um, depression of, of the topography.
I think the soil borrow area that was of most interest to me, I believe it is A on the, yeah, I think it's A on the drawing. It's the one next to Tally Mountain. Uh, what's the plans there? Because based on, again, I don't have a topographic map. That's one thing I would suggest y'all have, is a topographic map showing the whole layout, because all it has is cell C. But based on the estimate I was able to do, the line almost goes down the ridge of Tally Mountain for the soil borrow area.
So I believe the, the test pits that were dug in that area showed, um, shallow liner construction soils. I'm fairly certain that was one of the shallower, uh, borrow areas, but there were liner construction soils in that area. I'm, I'm remembering eight to twelve feet, again, just a subdued depression. But there were soils discovered in that area. It wouldn't be shown as a borrow area on the map.
So it, it's reasonable to make an assumption that, again, wherever that line hits Tally Mountain at, to the west of it, those trees will be removed for soil borrow?
Yes, sir. The, the barriers will have the trees removed for soil borrow.
From, from Tally, okay. And then the, the last thing, and maybe you can answer this, again, I, I keep saying the last thing, but I have questions. Um, on the map, the thing that caught my eye was there is a section H up near the railroad, and there's a section B, I believe it is, it's like a thirty-eight BG, uh, CG zoning request. But there's a strip of land tract I. What is the purpose and intent of that? I heard walking path earlier, but that's a long walking trail, and it takes a lot of money to do that. So I'm just, I'm inquisitive to why that piece of strip of land was left from the railroad track down to the CG.
I, I can explain that. Part of the proposal, part of the proposal is that some of these areas, and I think one of them was pointed out in the very north, on Goth Course Road.
Yes.
That and the triangular tract right on one hundred. Uh, we are requesting rezoning because it just makes sense to include them, but we're talking-
Yes, sir. That's it.
Well, let me just show, these two, this tract here is not gonna be developed.
Yes.
And this tract may or may not be developed. So the idea was, uh, in the future, those tracks could be used for recreational purposes. And if they were, then it would be good to have a walking path up from one recreational area to the other, the southerly to the northerly, uh, going by Tally Mountain for hikers and things like that. That's-
Yes. I, I was gonna say, that'd probably be the only people that would use that, because that's gonna be pretty steep right there. If, if my estimate on the topographic map is correct, that's pretty much going up the peak line of it and then back down the other on the other side. So, again, it, just interested in that section because it was, uh, very interesting to me.
But that's also additional buffer to that borrow area that you're talking about. That, that walking area wouldn't be disturbed.
Okay.
Unless it made a better trail, if, if the elevation is tough for hikers. That's fine.
I have a couple of other questions, if I may. Sure. So on the, uh, I, I heard the mention of jobs too in here, and, uh, it's just a big number, but what, what's like the breakdown of jobs on the projection for the landfill itself? How many people be employed there, a rough number? And how much are y'all anticipating industrial park sales generating that other number, right? I think it's like eleven hundred and eighty-something, if I remember looking at it.
If I'm remembering right, don't hold me to the exact number. I think there were annually roughly eight hundred plus jobs related to the waste disposal facility, and another eleven hundred jobs annually. And that's probably counting the same job, but there's still jobs up there.
Right, right.
Uh, from the industrial park as it's developed out.
So now, at the landfill itself, though, eight hundred jobs at the landfill? I, I know what associated means. I'm just asking for now, the landfill itself, twenty people, thirty people?
Oh, that's just employees, but you've got hundreds of people who are involved in the construction and the, the operation, the monitoring, uh, all that is added in.
Yes. Yes.
Everybody who would do work out there, uh, and the monitoring's constant, I mean, relatively constant, repeated every year, every half-year, every quarter. And the construction, as you're building one cell, you're building another, or you're using one cell, you're building another. So all those workers, uh, go into that number, I believe.
And, and while you're on that one, I did have a question about that.
Yes, uh, Commissioner, we're gonna take a little break real quick.
Okay.
And then that way you can get back to your, your questions.
Thank you, sir.
We'll take a five-minute break, everybody.